June 4th, 2019, Town of East Hampton zoning board of appeals meeting. If any of you are here for the Paul and Susan Gong Sai and Herman public hearing that has been postponed, that will not be heard this evening, okay? We do have three other public hearings and some other board business to take care of this evening, so we'll get going right away. We will start off with our first public hearing. The applicant here is Pamela Keane, lot size and location, 7,500 square feet, I guess that means, at 177 Shore Road in Amagansett. Tax map number 300-85-1-34.1, part of 42.1. Description to construct a 470-square-foot deck and allow a slate walkway to remain within the town's jurisdiction and minimum setbacks of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought here as a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 of the town code, and two variances are required to construct the deck and allow the slate walkway to remain within jurisdiction and setbacks of freshwater wetlands and beach vegetation. Two variances of 71 feet and 77 feet from 255-4-30 of the town code are required for the deck to be constructed and slate to remain 29 feet and 23 feet from freshwater wetlands, where 100-foot setbacks are required, and any other relief necessary. And this is in an AE residence zone. The flood zone here is AE flood zone elevation 11, and the secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
Okay.
Do you have receipts of mailing?
Yeah, I have to tell you also, I went to the site, I have a field report, and it was not properly noticed. You had, are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I saw your wife at your house, but I didn't, I saw no posting. The only thing there was in the window, there was a little eight-and-a-half by 11 folded in half, which was like the, you know, and it was kind of behind the screen. I mean, it was so, it was really...
Well, we had it posted on the property. I mean, it said to post it at least 10 days in advance, but it didn't indicate how long. And then over the weekend, we took it down because we thought...
How long was it posted for?
We posted it on the 19th of May.
Of May, 19th?
Yeah.
And for how long did you keep it up?
Until this past weekend, so Saturday or Sunday. So basically, two weeks it was up there.
Uh-huh. And do you have any photos of that or anything like that, or have it posted, or...
No. Nothing indicated, I had to document that we did it.
Yeah. Why'd you take it down? Just curious why you took it down this weekend?
Because we were doing yard work and planting stuff around the house. We had it posted on the corner of the driveway, and we were taking, putting in new plantings. Yeah, it was windy as well, but we were doing work in the yard and figured it had been up for two weeks.
Yeah.
And again...
Sorry, you can't speak from the audience. That's all right. Counsel, what do you think?
You could see the item in the window. I mean, when I pulled up, I saw it.
You saw it, okay. Okay. I mean, I did see it too. I was taking a picture, and then I walked towards the house, and I did see that. It certainly wasn't...
I might make a suggestion, and if you, if I can make a suggestion, if you put him under oath and have him, and then question him under oath as far as when he put it up and when he took it down.
Yeah.
I think that probably would be better.
I would be good with that. Does that work for you, counsel? That works for me, myself.
Well, we also need the, he needs to be, bring in the proof of mailing.
Do you have the, do you have the mailing? Do you have what you need with the service and posting, the affidavits? Counselor, no?
The affidavit is here, but normally, we also need the receipt of the mailing.
Just, to be honest with you, the instructions are not exactly clear.
Let me start off by swearing you in, okay? If you could, first of all, raise your right hand and give us, first, give us your name and address for the record and spell your last name. Everyone here, just so you know, this, everyone has to do this unless you're an attorney, so we do it once. So you, we need your name and address, and like, if you're the applicant or you're with a law office or whatever, and you have to spell your last name so that Denise can get it down for the record. So if you would, please.
Okay, so my name is Richard, last name is Morey, it's M-O-R-E-Y. My, our, we have two houses, one, our main address is 674 Hans Creek Road in East Hampton. My wife and I also have a residence at 177 Shore Road in Lazy Point, and that's where we're applying for the...
Okay, Richard, thank you. Do you, hold your right hand.
I'm sorry.
That's right, I'll let you let down a minute. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Can you say, under oath, tell us about the posting, how you posted it and when you did?
So we posted it on a sign at the corner of the driveway in the garden on the Saturday, May 18th or 19th, I forget the exact date. And so we had it up there until this past Saturday, where we were doing work in the garden. I didn't assume it had been up long enough because it said at least 10 days prior to the meeting, so we took it down because we were doing yard work.
On Saturday?
On Saturday, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and for the record, there was a smaller posting in the window.
Right, we just, when we took it down, I just stuck it in, I put another one up there. But also, if I can say, the instructions are not very clear about how big the posting has to be, that the thing you email is in...
You're given, you're given the placard, and you're written, and you're told by Denise, I believe, that the letter comes from that year, or to pick up your placard, which you did pick up, correct?
No, I, we got everything via email. There were no instructions regarding a placard that we had.
No instructions. There were instructions.
So do you not have, do you not have the large placard this big, like this big? So you just posted an eight-and-a-half by 11?
Or, yeah, basically, of the notice of our public hearing in large, as big as we could put it on this, on the piece of paper.
On the eight-and-a-half, was it like what was in the window?
No, it was, it was probably double that size, because that was just, I just reprinted what you guys had sent us. But we didn't, we didn't get anything, I mean, the instructions we got were via email, and in addition, the affidavit references a notification of complete application or something, which is not in any way clear that that's actually the public hearing notice. And I had to call the planning department on Monday for clarification, so that's also very confusing.
And who'd you speak with?
I called, left a message, and then I called again. It was supposed to call back and speak to Denise, and then I think Tom, who was the planner that I'd been working with, called me back and explained to me...
Mike.
Mike.
Mike, I'm sorry.
When instructions are mailed to the applicant, everything is forwarded by email, and we also...
We never got any mail.
And we also let you know that there are postings available in the office to either be picked up, or we will mail them to you. But if you have noticed, and you're aware of the fact that it had to be 10 days prior to this hearing, you did get the instructions, because that's what it said.
We got the instructions via email, there was no placard.
Where do you get your mail?
At 674 Hans Creek.
Well, maybe the mail was sent to 177 Shore Road.
I mean, the application, everything, the addresses on all the applications was the 674 address, because that's where we get our mail, and that's where they're around.
We use the information available in our file for contact information, and that's where the information would have been sent. So you're here tonight because you heard from someone else that there was a public hearing?
No, we got the email, like I said, and followed the vague instructions given us in the email.
And you were also given instructions. I mean, what we've done in the past when this happens is, you can leave the record open to make sure neighbors were aware, if it wasn't properly posted. You can pick up a sign in the morning.
But also, the town attorney told me to just notice the, send the notice to the trustees, since it's all trustee land. So the trustees are certainly aware, because they've given us permission to do it pending a building permit.
Right, okay. Counsel, is that how it normally works? Do you just notice the trustees in this, in this area of town? It would seem you'd still notice the leasees of...
You would have to notice every, any property owner that's...
Except when I was at the planning department, and someone said, wasn't sure about that, they told me, call the town attorney, which I did.
And who'd you speak with?
I don't remember now, but the town attorney said, let me get back to you, and she got back to me and said, you can just notice the trustees.
Are the, is it only, are the only adjacent properties all owned by trustees?
The land is all owned by the trustees. We own the house. We lease the land to the trustees. That's the case, all the houses around us, the people across the street from us who know we're doing the deck, because we hang out with them all the time, they don't own the land. They lease the land to the trustees.
Yeah, sure.
And the lots to our left and to our right are vacant, and the lot, and behind us is a, is a nature preserve, but it's all owned by the trustees.
Okay, well, why don't we get going with the field report? Well, Denise takes a look, and then we will, I think we may have to end up leaving the record open until you, you properly post it for a certain amount of time and take care of it.
But we would also need the receipts of the mailing.
And we'll need the receipts of the mailing.
And it would have to be posted.
But if they only noticed the trustees, it maybe should have been...
And actually, now, what are they, what are they posting for? Are they posting for, what would they be posting for? Because the meeting's tonight.
Because if you left the record open, the people would have an opportunity to respond.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we have PKNY2006@gmail as the contact info.
Right, and that's where we got the email. Do you have an address?
And what mailing address do you have, Denise? What mailing address do you have on the file there with the application, please?
We indicated it to his email address, everybody.
No, the mailing, when you mailed, when you mailed...
We don't mail it. We do it by email.
Oh, you do it by email?
It all is email, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
But the email didn't have any placard or anything, and there was no indication...
No, she's saying that the email has the instructions, and the instructions say, come to the office and pick it up.
Because we give you the option of either picking up the sign or letting us know you want it mailed.
The instructions did not say that.
I'm sure they do. Denise has been doing this for many years. I'm sure they do, Richard. So, you have a suggestion? Yes?
Yeah, well, I've been in contact with my boss, who's downstairs, who said, if you claim that they, that you have the receipts, that they were properly mailed, we can proceed with the hearing, but with the caveat that if you're not, if you don't submit them, and they were not served with sufficient time, once they were received, the hearing will be void for lack of jurisdiction.
Okay.
So...
So do you want the receipt we got when we mailed it, or the return receipt we got?
The receipt when you mailed it.
Okay.
Because it's, it's based on the date that you mail it, so we can go back the 10 days from...
But who was it mailed to? Only the trustees?
Only the trustees, yeah.
So do we know that that's correct, and the homeowners?
Nancy, you need to speak, or go ahead, Nancy, if you need to.
No, John's coming up.
Okay, okay. Okay. Maybe we'll start the...
We have entire, entire office...
Yeah. The town attorney's office, yeah, right.
None of us had, had advised him not to...
I spoke to someone on the phone, I wouldn't have made that up. I wouldn't just do that because I wanted to do it. I wanted to know what to do.
But you don't, but you don't know who you spoke with, that's, yeah, okay.
There's a lot of, there's, from what I'm hearing, though, there's a lot of missing parts here. The town attorney told you, you didn't post it, you didn't pick up a posting, you didn't read, you know, the instructions were wrong, and we never hear that stuff on this board. This is the first time I'm hearing all those things going wrong.
Right.
So, you know, that's hard for me to believe. I'm just saying, it's hard for me to believe, because we never get this.
We've been trying to get the reason for this for like, a year and a half, because everything is, takes forever, and I've done every step...
Right, but all I've heard tonight from you is that everything else was wrong, and that, we don't see that, we don't, we don't see that here on this board. We just, we know, we know her job.
There was no placard, you know. When I got a building permit to do our deck, I did everything right, the building department sent me all this stuff, sent me the building permit, which I...
But I can tell you, this is, not every, not every aspect of this application was done wrong for you. So I, we know that, this, so...
Believe me, when you go back and check your email, you can send it to us and show us, and I'm sure, I would bet good money Denise is correct on that one, because she doesn't just make them up, she's sending out the same email to everyone, okay? So...
There was, there was three attachments. There was the affidavit, there was the public hearing, the eight-and-a-half by 11 public hearing notice, and the instructions, and that was it.
Yeah, that's what you're supposed to do.
Well, where's the placard? There was no instructions in the email that the placard...
In the email, it says that you can either pick it up, or you can let, let them mail it to you.
Some people like to pick it up, and we give them that option.
And we never have this, this never happens to anyone else but you.
And on top of it, you took the posting down early.
Yeah.
Well, again, the instructions don't say how long to put it up. They say put it up at least...
Our ignorance is... 10 days prior to the public hearing, that's pretty clear.
We put it up 14 days prior.
We're giving you a month notice for your...
Right, you can put it up a month before, but you're supposed to leave it up 10 days prior to the public hearing. In other words, it should still be up as of today. It should still be up there right now.
That's not clear.
Well, it's pretty clear to most of the rest of the world. So here comes our town attorney right now, like, we have nothing else to do this evening. Like...
I think we rule this hearing...
Should we just move the hearing back to another time? I think we should just postpone this hearing.
Why don't we just leave it open?
See what John says, yeah.
Why don't we just leave it open?
But if he didn't notice people that needed to be noticed...
I know.
The proper poster that the town provides was not a poster...
Jurisdictional defect.
Yeah, I think so, because, I mean, there's a lot of things that went wrong tonight on this, on this hearing.
They did post something, it just wasn't the big poster.
It was a half a piece of eight-and-a-half by 11 inside a screen, which...
It was posted for 10 days, but it was removed, it was posted on the 19th of out, and already, and then removed on the 29th of out. So it was for 10 days, but just not any of the days leading up to tonight.
Do you see the poster? Do you know what it said?
No.
It was just a copy of the public hearing notice that he sent us on the...
No, that's not...
It wasn't even the placard. It wasn't even the placard. It was a piece of eight-and-a-half by 11 that he enlarged a little bit.
And then this with...
So it wasn't, it was not...
You need to have your mailing receipts with this. You got...
And there's no mailing receipts? It also isn't, it's not properly posted when you're...
No, if it's not, if it's not posted properly, you guys don't have jurisdiction to hear it.
Yeah, and I can't, yeah.
Can I ask an additional question? He said that he had noticed the trustees. Does he have to notice the trustees plus his adjacent neighbors?
You have to notice the adjacent properties. You can exclude those people listed on the exclusion list in the code.
Okay.
So this is trustees' land, as you well know, John, and thanks for helping out.
Go ahead.
No, I don't know. I have no idea what it's...
What the address is.
Trustees lease the land.
Oh, okay, so it's a lease sign up at Lazy Point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would they notice the neighbors, the other leasees, the neighboring houses?
Or is it just the property owner, which is the trustees, apparently?
Yeah, probably just the property. Required to, the code requires, I mean, do you have it here? It's the record owner, I recall, so tenants are not record owners.
So he, if he noticed the trustees and he brings in the mail receipts...
Yeah.
And the trustees are the only adjacent property owners?
Owners. So essentially, what you're saying is, we need to adjourn the hearing in order to have the 10 days with the placard up?
That's, that's the easiest solution. If you could just adjourn it to another date and then get the plaque...
Now, just one more complication. Did you, you said you have a trustee's permit for this?
Yes, we got it last year, because we didn't know if this was going to take...
So the trustees sort of really know about it, because they gave a permit.
If the trustees are on our routing list, they were given a copy of this application.
Yeah.
We would have routed it to them.
Were they on the...
Well, they're listed, they're listed in the application as a neighboring property.
I always communicate with the trustees.
And they gave us a permit based on getting a building permit.
They didn't have the code.
And then we went to the building department, and they said we had to get a variant, so...
I think...
Back to the trustee question. They lease the land, but the homeowners own the homes. They're not renting the homes.
No, they own the buildings.
They own the buildings, that's what he said, yeah. So does that make a difference?
If you do decide that...
And they're what, terms of a year for now? Or are they longer leases?
At the moment, they're a year, but the trustees have just voted, agreed, and made a 30-year...
35, yeah.
They haven't given us the new leases yet.
I think, personally, if you think...
To be safe, you're better off giving the property owners as well as the, as well as the homeowners a copy, you know, but if it's posted, they're going to see it, but, I mean, I don't have the code in front of me.
But I believe that the lots to our left and right are vacant. And then...
There's land across the street.
But there was a house across the street.
I'm just going to suggest, I mean, I'm going to suggest, from a procedural and jurisdictional point, I think we ought to postpone the hearing until...
July 16th. Denise can fit it, fit you in July 16th.
You need the, you need the poster.
Yeah, the placard was not there, ever.
And it is, it's a requirement for jurisdiction on the board to have that, both elements met.
Yeah, yeah.
And the notice that he receives, the eight-by-11 notice, is insufficient, it's got to be the placard?
Yeah, it needs to be, I mean, I, do you have the section?
It's a certain, it's a certain size for a reason, so that people driving by can see it.
Can see it, yeah. And it talks about how far it has to be, how high off the road, and...
Again, that's why I know it wasn't in what you sent me, because I got the building for it.
We never said it was in what we sent you. We've said this 10 times.
No, you said originally it was, and then you said...
It was in the email, the instructions, okay?
It wasn't in there, you're correct, but if you can pick it up, or we'll be more than happy to mail it to you.
Right.
And even if it was, if the instruction was in the email, why isn't it in the whole public hearing instruction, two paragraph thing that you sent? Like, it should be clear, everything's in here. I may have not even...
It's a whole page of instructions on...
Right, but there's nothing in the notice instructions about the placard, even if it was in the email.
You're the only, you're the only person that seems to have a problem with this, so...
I'll do whatever I can to accommodate.
Well, I'll reread it, and if I'm right, I'll forward it all to you and point it out.
At this point, let's just resolve it. So if we're going on the July 16th, we'll send you all the documents you already received, and I'll ask you tonight, do you want us to mail the post, the poster?
Yes.
What is your address?
674 Hans Creek Road, East Hampton.
Or you can also stop by tomorrow and pick it up.
I would prefer you mailed it.
I would prefer to mail it as well.
Good. Okay, Denise, you think you can fit him on the 16th of July?
I can absolutely put him on the 16th.
Okay, thank you, Denise. Okay, so we'll do it, we'll do it, and, and just so we're clear, you're going to post it?
Do I have to renotice the trustees? Do I have to notice anybody else?
You have to renotice your neighbors.
You have to renotice...
It's...
Well, if you come back with the mailing receipts, and they're...
For just the trustees?
He only mailed, he only mailed the trustees.
He only noticed the trustees' date, so they have to renotice.
They're going to have a, yeah, you're going to have to give them the new date, though. So you really are going to have to...
Just did, July 16th.
Yeah, they didn't hear it, they're not here.
They don't hear.
No, you'll have to renotice them.
I'm asking, do I have to renotice just the trustees?
Yes, we're trying to decide if...
No, I would, I would, you know what? If it was me, I would be noticing that the people who own the houses themselves too, because if somebody wants to challenge this approval...
Yeah, I agree.
And they turn out to be right, your approval becomes void, and you'll have to go through the process again.
So let me, Richard, you're going to have to notice the trustees, and any houses that are either across the street from your property, if the vacant land is next to you, you don't have to, but the houses...
So the vacant lots on either side, I mean, I don't have to worry about it. It's just the house across the street from us.
If there's one or two, whatever's kind of across from your property.
Well, there's one across, I mean, there's one here and there's one here. Do I have to do all three, or just the one straight?
It depends if they're across from your property line or not.
You have to take your property lines and draw a straight line, and it's anything that's within that boundary.
But if you're familiar with the trustees, the way the landlots are, our, part of our house is on the lot next door.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay, so, I mean, that's why I'm asking for clarification, because I don't want to go through this again. Do I draw the lines, and any buildings that cut into the lines? I mean...
Yes, you just...
Yeah, any contiguous, contiguous. Part of anybody else's lot in there, they got to notice.
Right.
Yeah, if they're in that zone, they have to have a notice, otherwise...
And what's the best place to get a copy of the, of the lots to show the buildings or whatever?
You can probably go to the trustees and get that.
The trustee's office would have that data.
Right.
The actual property lines themselves, that's all in the assessor's office.
And then the assessor will have all the mailing information for you.
Because otherwise, you just don't want to be, you don't want to have whatever approval you got here to be subject to attack later, you know, for failure to notice somebody who is required.
And you'd have to start over.
And why is it so vague as to who to, who to notice? Who, I mean, I, I spoke to the attorney's office, because someone at the planning department told me, call the town's attorney to find out who to notice, and I spoke to someone at the town's attorney's office six months ago, who said you can just notice the trustees. Why is there now a question about that? And why is there...
Well, if you want to just notice the trustees, then just notice the trustees, and then if a homeowner makes a challenge...
No, I want to do this right, but I want to know...
And if it's successful, your, your application becomes void, so if you don't want to spend any extra couple bucks...
And Richard, the next time we talk to people, when you're trying to get legal about this, find out the person's name, whoever you speak with, you should know that.
I probably have notes somewhere, I didn't...
If you want to just go by what's in the code, then that's all we require, and then you subject yourself to...
Richard, hey, Richard, you know what? I'm cutting you off.
But again, how am I subjecting myself? You guys should say, these are the rules.
Richard...
You have to do this, you have to do that.
Excuse me, listen to me. You're cut off. Please go to your seat. Thank you. Okay, we'll move along.
All right. Is this mine, or which one's yours?
Yeah, I, yeah. I don't think we even started. Oh, yeah, you know what? I did read it in, so, counsel, I started reading it, and I think I'll make a motion that we're going to postpone this public hearing.
Yes, you should just adjourn it to the-
July sixteenth.
Read upon date, so that-
Right.
Can be.
So I would think-
Get the affidavits of service with the mailing receipts.
Great.
And the poster posted at least ten days prior.
Great. Thank you for helping out, John.
Thank you.
Okay, so with regard to the application for Pamela Keane at one-
Here it is.
Seventy-seven Shore Road. Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting until the July sixteenth, whereby it shall be properly posted, and the trustees and adjacent neighbors notified.
Second.
Incur.
Incur.
Do you want to put this with the file?
But we haven't till seven-ten before we can start the next.
You want to take some-
Yeah, we'll take care of some other business, pull the next file here.
We have some requests to adjourn time.
I'm sorry?
What?
Joan?
We have some administrative stuff.
Yes, I know, I'm just getting it.
Extensions of time.
Well, we can, can't we, it's six-
Okay, so we have to, we-
I think we go forward.
Because the next one is postponed.
Thank you.
So, our next hearing, for those of you in the audience, our next hearing will commence at seven-ten PM, which is in fifteen minutes, so we'll take care of some other board business between now and then. So, board members, let me jump to our agenda. I think we will probably go to the extensions of time. Okay, so let's start with the extensions of time. The first is Young and Lemieux, and this is a tax map number three hundred dash eighty-four dash two, dash ten point one at fifty-seven Mulford Lane in Ambequinset. And, board members, I did a field report, this is an important application, as we know, pardon me, and, so I went and I just did a field report to kind of refresh us of what's going on here. And Denise, do you have that extension of time? Oh, thank you.
In the bin.
In the bin.
In the back.
Thank you.
With the next-
Oh, the next one, there, it's over there.
Yeah, 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 I brought the whole file. And for Young and Lemieux, there's actually two extensions of time. One we just received today, and one was tabled from another meeting. Because we haven't made a decision.
Is, is, from your view?
I know, I just took some pictures when I went through it.
They're in the file, yes.
There's certain exercises about how to get your bag.
And Young and Lemieux has been tabled, so, and Deminell, too. I just need a motion.
Okay, so we had tabled Young and Lemieux, I think we wanted to kind of get a sense of it. Let me just read off what the extension is for, and then maybe I'll just walk you through these photos briefly. Okay, so I'll read this in. The permit name is Joshua Young and Christine Lemieux Revetment Construction. It goes back, the original permit date was November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve. The last extension was May, oh, that would be May fourteen, nineteen, it was scheduled for the May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen hearing, when we first discussed it. Again, tax map number three hundred dash eighty-four dash two dash ten point one at one-five-seven Mulford Lane in Ambequinset. And again, they're, they're, the, it is for the granting of time extension, one second here, I just wanted to see. Yeah, so it's basically for their, for the revetment, the permit for the revetment.
And then they've just submitted one-
Oh, and then you-
For the residence.
And then we have another one for the residence here.
Which we just received today.
Let's see. Oh, and that's the one on top, okay. So then this is for, an extension for the, the one is for the, check for the revetment. And we've also included a copy of the last extension for the project, last dated November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. I do not see. I don't think I'm missing, am I missing something? Oh, then, maybe this is one here. Okay, then we have another one here, no, that's just the copy of the last one that we signed.
Yeah, we don't have the, we don't have the actual extension of time.
I don't see the other extension.
Well, the other request just came in, it should be in the front with a check attached.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's the one that I just read off, though.
Yeah, one is for-
So I have one for the revetment?
One that keeps getting tabled is the revetment. And today, we received one for the residence. I just want to know how you want to proceed.
Yeah, but I just don't, I see one for the revetment here, but I don't see one for the residence. I only see one extension here.
Because we just got it today, is that why?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, we just got it today.
I just don't see it.
Let me look through the file and move on to the next extension.
Okay, okay.
Let me take a look.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Maybe what I'll do is I'll start walking through my field report on this one. Thanks, Jamison. So, board members, this is actually looking, I guess I'm sort of looking northeast here. This is the neighbor to the west, the house on the right is the neighbor to the west, but I just wanted to give you a sense of the area, what's going on. And the building off in the water is directly in front of the applicant. And if you could go to the next one.
Go to the right side, and an arrow might pop up.
Well, that's, that's scaling there, you can scale them up, too. Jamison, I think you can make them a lot bigger if you want to, that's what that icon is that you just touched. Yeah, that one there, you can make them larger. There we go. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now here, I've walked up, again, walked up closer, and this is the subject parcel, and you see the stones there, and some of the, what's holding up that deck. Some of them are just stacked up pieces of six by six stacked on top of each other. Next, please.
You can hit the right arrow.
It won't let you hit the right arrow if you're already zoomed in. You have to zoom out, and then, and advance.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, there, that's the next one. So now you can see here, I've walked right up to it, and you can see kind of what's holding up that porch, and some of the stones that are existing there, looking off at the Thank you, Jamison. And then this is just a shot from that, from those two buildings, looking to the west down the beach, and that happens to be one of our public hearings this evening, that house in the distance that you see, or the only house in that. But I just wanted to give you a sense of the beach west of this parcel. I think that might be the last one, Jamison?
Facing west.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, yeah, then I just took this shot, thank you. Yeah, that's facing north and east, I guess it would be, up the beach from the subject parcel. And I just wanted to show you, you see that groin in the distance, and you see how over time it's really carved in, carved along that beach. Scowling, yes, thanks, right, right. And I believe that's, oh, then I took one more. So this would be from kind of the east side of the property, again, looking at some of the conditions there, and the, and the building offshore.
Whose building is that?
So, again, that's, this is what's going on there. I don't know when things are going to take place. It goes back to two thousand and twelve. I'm, I'm, for right now, it hasn't been in our ten-year range that we normally really consider, but we did want to take a look, so I went out there. So, I'm fine with granting this extension myself, board members, I don't know how you feel.
And this is to do what? To repete the revetment?
And also, just for the record, I did a little research with the building department, and they don't have a building permit.
For the-
For the, it's Deminell, right?
No, no, this is, no, this is Young and Lemieux.
Oh, you're still talking about that?
Yeah.
So here is the residence, and the extension of time for that. And here is-
Oh, great.
The revetment.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I'll keep the rest of the file.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, am I allowed to, counsel, can we, I wouldn't mind having Brian before, I mean, I said, Brian, could we ask you to give us a little comment here? I know you're completely unprepared for this. The Young and Lemieux, was that your application way back when?
Yeah.
I'm sort of, I mean, I'm-
Do you want a little history?
Yeah, would you mind just, I know you, you're in a walking encyclopedia, and I thought we might, might tap on that. If you don't mind, Brian, maybe you can just give us a little history here, if you could, and I'll square you in for the evening while you're here.
Sure.
Thanks, Brian, if you could raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks, Brian.
I'm Brian Frank, I'm the chief environmental analyst for the town in the planning department.
Thank you.
I reviewed the applications. This is actually the property adjoining the Young and Lemieux house. This isn't-
Oh, are they the first picture I took? If you go back, I'm sorry, I was-
This is, I've always known, yeah, that's-
Oh, that's it right there.
Probably Young. It was, it was an interesting application, and it's actually poignant to bring it up tonight, because it's, you know, the attorney for your later hearing references this, this application.
Yeah, and they're basically almost adjoining each other, the-
Well, but there are some significant differences between this and the Ruru application, jeez, I can't believe I said that out loud. The other application that we're going to hear a little bit later, and I'll discuss that later, but getting back to the history of the Young and Lemieux property, it is a flag lot that's accessed from the end of Mulford Avenue. So if you get to the end of Mulford Avenue, you have the house. I think the name right now is the street address in an LLC, one fifty-three Mulford Lane LLC. For years, it was either called Paget or Cook, one of the, one of the prior owners. Adjacent to that, to the west, is Young and Lemieux. They get their access to that property across a private driveway easement on the back of the Paget property.
Uh-huh.
They had made an application, and I forget the year exactly, I think it was two thousand and nine. There were two separate applications. One was to demolish the residence and build a new residence in a more landward location, a larger residence in a more landward location, and build a rock revetment. That application was granted in part and denied in part. The residential reconstruction was granted, the revetment application was denied. And the specific details for the, for that denial, you really should refer to the file. I don't know it well enough to explain that.
It's, he has the decision, so.
It's in there. Then there was a separate application just for the rock revetment, and that ultimately was approved. And, you know, since you asked me my opinion, the planning department did not support that application, contrary to what you may read in the attorney's submission in the, in the later hearing that we're going to have. But it was granted. There were, there were a lot of issues, the proximity of where the structure is, the wetlands adjoining to the west, the fact that the board respectfully made a poor finding that a house that wasn't even built yet was in imminent peril from coastal erosion. It was, in my opinion, it was one of the board's poorer decisions in that time.
Yeah, I must say I-
But it was granted.
Yeah, I must say, I probably spoke too soon there, because to me, this goes against everything, and I guess I was, I guess I'm kind of wanting the legality of it. Here it was granted first, I believe, in two thousand and twelve. Seven years later, and no action has been taken, and it, it pretty much is going-
Well, we're going to cover this a little bit later, but-
Well, can I ask you this question? I mean, they're looking for an extension of time. The question that I have, have the conditions changed so much in that period of time that we should take another serious look at it?
Well, I think there are some structures on the property that were built without permits that weren't there when the permit was granted.
Like the basketball court in the back?
Well, the concrete basketball court.
The coastal conditions.
The coastal conditions are largely similar. But, you know, it's interesting when, you know, this is really a topic for the later hearing, and we may have to touch on it again. Part of the findings of two local respected engineers, Drew Bennett and Tom Talmage in the town, made a finding that the property was in imminent peril from coastal erosion. And that is, you know, if you ask a licensed engineer to put his stamp on something that says that a structure along the water is not in imminent peril, I don't think you'll find an engineer to do that, any more than you'll find a medical doctor to guarantee that you're healthy after you get a physical and he doesn't find anything wrong.
Right, right.
That whole evaluation is too simplistic, too dumbed down, to have real practical application. That is the language that is in the code right now. So, yes, you had a, you had an engineer in two thousand and twelve say that the house was in imminent peril. Nothing has changed by that house now, the house is still standing, we've had Hurricane Sandy since then, we've had innumerable number of nor'easters since then. The, that is such a vague and nebulous criteria that it's very unwieldy. And I don't blame either of the engineers for saying that. As I said, good luck finding an engineer who will put his stamp on the line to the contrary.
Yeah, you make a good point.
But it's an example of the flaw in the language. It's just-
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to table this, until maybe our work session and for discussion?
Yeah, yes.
That we have an opportunity to look at.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I'd also like to-
You know, this is worth, respectfully, a lot of times you can get the gist of an application from the decision.
Right.
I would, I would recommend you look at the whole, or the most relevant portions of the substance of the file, know how it got where it got.
Yeah, yeah. And plus, we may have a question, some of us may have questions for counsel as well.
Right.
Yeah, thank you, Roy, for that. I completely agree with Vice Chair Delene. I'd like to make, I don't know if I have to make a motion, but to table this. So, board members, do we agree we'll table this?
And I'll- And all the information's in the file.
Between now and the next work session, send you the decisions for both the revetment and the residence.
Great, in our mailbox or whatever, yeah.
So let me have those.
Yeah, good, thank you, Denise, great. Brian, thank you so much for that, appreciate that. Okay, next, let's see how we're doing on time here. I guess we have seven-ten, I think we're good. Okay, so we'll get back to our agenda.
Now comes the productive portion of the show.
Yeah, exactly. So far, we're not getting much done. Our seven-ten public hearing, the applicants are Carolyn and Michael Smith, at nineteen thousand nine hundred and fif, sorry, the lot size and location is nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet at twenty-two Robbins Way, section number five of Barnes Landing, filed ten twenty-four nineteen fifty-seven. Springs, tax map number three hundred dash one zero three dash six dash nineteen. Description is to construct six hundred and seventy square feet of additions, six hundred and fifty-four square feet of first and second floor decking, four hundred and forty-eight square feet, pool, thirty square feet, outdoor shower, sanitary system, fencing and cellarway, and to allow fencing to remain within the town's jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands. The relief saw the natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty-five dash four dash twenty of the town code four, and seven variances are required for this project. Variances of eighteen feet, nineteen feet, twenty-nine feet, twenty-nine feet, thirty-one feet, and fifty-one feet from two fifty-five dash four dash thirty wetland setbacks are required to construct the additions, covered porch, decking, pool, cellarway, and fencing eighty-two feet, eighty-one feet, seventy-one feet, seventy-one feet, sixty-nine feet, and forty-nine feet respectively, from the wetlands where one hundred foot setbacks, where one hundred foot is required. One variance of sixty-five feet from two fifty-five dash four dash thirty wetland setbacks are required to allow the existing fencing to remain thirty-five feet from the wetlands where one hundred feet is required, and any other relief necessary. This is in a B residence zone, the flood zone is X, and the secret class is type two. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
Okay, we're actually not counsel, we're just, I'm the property owner.
She's counsel.
Oh, this counsel, I'm sorry. So this is, we have two separate affidavits, because our architect did the mailings and I did the posting. Okay, great.
Got the certified mail return receipt and pictures of the posters.
Look at you guys, okay, let me just check the calendar.
And the location of the lots.
Yeah, shocking.
Thank you.
It's nice you were able to follow directions.
We were here for the last one.
And I saw the posting.
You're being tested tonight.
At least we got that for.
Yeah.
Paperwork appears to be in order, for the historic.
Okay, thank, thank you.
For the files, all the adjacent neighbors.
There's a lot, I know, you want the folder for it?
There's a folder up there called Smith.
Oh, for the field report, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, if you sent me, it's in, I'm sure, I didn't-
Below that to the right, yeah. Nope, that's, close that out. And look below that box to the right.
Yes.
Right there, down, 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 down further, down. No, it's a folder down below that.
Oh, not on the shared drive. You know, we have a remote, a remote mouse.
Okay, this is in, Board Member Delene Spring?
Yes, Chairman, I visited the house today, and as you can see, the property is properly posted. By the way, there's mention of the, of the fence on the property, whether or not it's, it's a, so that, this is the fence, appears to be a different, so we'll find out about that a little bit.
Yeah. How high did that seem to you?
It was about, it's an eight-foot fence, I believe.
Okay.
And same thing with the gates. It seemed to exceed the height of the allowable gate, unless there's a, unless they're legal, I'm not sure. So, this is the entry into the property. Taking a look over to the right of, no, I'm sorry, this is, I scanned to the left of the property, so this is looking toward the wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
Walked a little bit down and that's the, that's the end, basically the line of the wetlands going in along the property there. There's a second gate. And now, if you look, as we're going into the house, that's a picture of the front of the house. Looking at the side of the house, this is the approximate area. I'll scan a little bit over to the right, but that's basically where the septic is going.
Back in here, right?
Yeah, over in that corner. Yeah, that's again, another picture of it. Looking at along the house, the back of the house, and the pool is gonna be just rear of this structure.
Over here.
Basically is where the pool, that's basically the location of the pool. Looking at, I think that's the neighbor in the back.
Yeah, Quality Row.
Yeah, 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 that's the neighbor in the back of the...
That's the only house you can really see from our house.
Yeah.
I mean, except for...
Again, just trying to show you what the surrounding neighborhood is. Next one. And then looking from the back of the property again to that rear of the house. I think that's the last photo I have.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, Roy. Board Members, any questions for Roy on his field report?
The wetlands, oh, no, I think it's part of the nature, because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a...
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Roy. Okay, so now we will hear, now, are you, both the applicants here?
No, my name is Carolyn Purcell Smith and my husband, Michael Smith, is right in the front row. And this is our architect.
Right there, good.
Michael Macrina. And everybody involved in this project is named Michael, so it gets confusing.
Right, okay.
Michael Delali, yes, he's from Plant Park. And our survey, our engineer is named Michael also.
And is your name Michelle?
Carolyn. But my son is also Michael.
So, we're gonna, I swear you both in knowing, if you're gonna speak together, if you could, you just gave us your name, so if you could raise your right hand, please. One at a time, I'll do. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And you, sir, you can give us your name and address or your affiliates.
Michael Macrina, from Michael Macrina Architect, 21 Main Street, Stony Road.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Could you spell your last name, sir? Thank you. And you are the?
Architect.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just gonna jump in. I'm not sure how much information you want. Stop me if I give you too much.
Well, this is basically your time to plead your case.
Okay. So, my husband and I are making this application. Just a little bit of history, my parents built this house in 1980. They bought the property in the '60s and they built a house on it in the '80s. And when my father passed away three years ago, my husband and I bought it from my siblings. So, I'm familiar with the property going back, but just have owned it recently. The house, you know, we love the house, we've spent a lot of good years there, but it's really in need of upgrading everything. A lot of the siding needs to be replaced, the windows internally, the bedrooms, you know, the bathrooms and kitchen and all that. So, we wanted to bring it up for our family, for the next generation or two to enjoy, like we have over the last 30 years. So, if you look at the plans, basically, the footprint of the house is essentially staying the same, with the exception of a couple of bump outs. So, even in this picture, like, there's these little bump outs over here. You see how it, like, kinda recesses under the window? Here and here? That's one of the areas of, that one of the variances are for that, and there's a similar one in the front.
Yeah, the existing house is that '80s modern type of design, we're trying a more traditional. We need to square off a couple areas just to...
Right. And then, so that's one of the variances we're asking, and just to take a step back, you probably saw it in Mr. Delali's report, but the house itself is within 100 feet of the wetlands. When it was built, there was no wetlands designation or requirement to be outside of that, which I never knew until recently. So, the next thing we're looking for is to put a front porch on the house, to make it just kinda some curb appeal. That's another one of the variances. It'll protrude from the front of the house as it currently exists. So, it's not gonna be closer to the wetlands than the house currently is, it's just gonna extend forward to Robbins Way to put that porch on the front of the house. And above the porch is also a little terrace for one of the bedrooms. So, that's another one of the variances. The next variance is for the basement entrance. There's no, currently, there's no basement entrance and the basement is currently not finished. We would like to put some rec room down there.
So, let me interrupt for a second. Michael, I know Michael Delali was asking about your depth to groundwater with the cellar, did you...
I prepared, could I hand them out to you? I prepared profiles of those.
Sure, yeah, for the record, if you want to hand one into the record.
Sure.
And maybe you can give one to Michael, too, so he can take a look at it before he speaks.
I have a question. So, how do you access the cellar now?
Just from inside the house.
Is it interiors?
Okay, so for the record...
We have one for the file.
Yeah, we'll take all, we'll give one to Michael.
Yeah, it's my last one.
Oh, okay.
We'll share, we'll share.
Yeah. Typically, you should have, like, 12 copies, just...
No.
Yeah, Michael should take a look at one. Okay, so for the record, I'll note that Mr. Macrina's diagram shows that the, that there is, to the bottom of the footing, there's a two-foot, three and three-quarter inch separation from the groundwater at elevation, which is at elevation 4.6. Okay, and Michael can comment on this when he comes up, too. Thank you, you may continue.
And I just wanna also point out that there is really, as far as we could tell, there's really nowhere else to put an entrance to the basement. On the opposite side of the house, there's a garage, which I believe is on a slab, so you couldn't go in from the opposite side of the house. And we have deck mostly in the back, so we, and then in the, I don't think it would look appropriate in the front of the house, and I'm not sure where we would put an entrance from the front. So, that's why we picked this spot. And I, Michael's explained to me that when it was built, the code didn't require having access to the basement, but current code does. So, we think it's a necessity and we don't think we have any other alternative. And we're having it designed in a way that it shouldn't affect the environment. And also, I know that Michael Delali, in his comments, talked about putting up some kind of mesh fencing during construction along the wetlands, which we have no problem doing.
Well, we'll have a conversation after we get about the thing about the clearing, so...
Okay.
Probably wanna define what the clearing is and where, what the limits of clearing will be.
Okay.
We have it on the survey here.
Are there bedrooms in the basement?
No. Right now, there's nothing down there, except for the oil tank and the hot water heater. That's really it.
Michael, if there's a...
Oh, no, filtration system.
I'll ask you a question later. My question is, do you really need a second entrance to the basement if you don't have a bedroom? It's just a rec room. That's a question, I'm not sure if that's clear or not.
Current code is, regardless of finished or unfinished, you need a secondary exterior terrace.
I know you need a, I know you need a second means of egress from a bedroom, right?
Yeah, but even if it's an unfinished basement now, it requires a secondary means of egress.
Really?
Yeah. That came about in 2015, International Residential...
Yeah, okay, I wasn't aware of that, okay.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, is there a larger survey?
Yes, 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 yes. There's not many, I'll look for some more. Take a look at that one.
Does the rec room have, or do you have any, what they would call wet, like, does it have a toilet or?
No.
No.
It's just a rec space.
It's just a rec...
There was a plan submitted to, submitted with the application.
Yeah, I have, it's just hard to read.
Oh, okay. I mean, I have one larger copy.
No, it's fine.
I have one copy.
Fine.
It's just a rectangle, just an open space that's open to the interior staircase and the upstairs deckings.
I have the large set here, Board Members, if you wanna take a look in any of this. Go ahead.
And for the record, we've never had any problem with water in the basement. I know that could change, but in 30 years, we've never had water down there.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, it was very dry.
Okay, the next thing to discuss is the pool and, I guess, the decking. That 29-inch variance, I think, is the decking near the pool. So, I don't think there's anywhere else to put the pool with, I think you heard we're gonna be putting in a low nitrogen septic system here, which kind of came about from our whole discussion with Mike Delali. He indicated to us that that's something you would probably encourage or may require here. So, we made the determination to just go ahead and have it designed and just agree to do it. And I have applied for all the grants and we've been approved for them so far, from the county and from the town.
Great.
And I think there's one from the state we're waiting to hear from.
Good.
But with regard to where the pool is, according to our architect and our engineer for the septic system, it's really the only place it fits on the property to comply with all the different other setback requirements of Suffolk County Health and the DEC and... So, that's why we chose that spot and that's why we feel it's necessary to put it there. And we would like to have a pool. Other houses on the block have pools. The two houses, the house directly across the street has a pool and the one next to that has a pool. And the house adjacent to ours, there's a vacant lot that they own and then their house has a pool.
And also, we're gonna be relocating the pool equipment and the pool dry well from the clear, it is, right now, it's in the clearing. We'd have to clear to locate those items, so we're actually gonna locate that outside the clearing area. So, that will be a, they will make on the...
So, is, are you saying you're gonna submit a subsequent drawing?
Sure, yes.
So, it shows what?
What's the subsequent drawing for?
Well, I think with respect to the clearing, I'm not sure what the clearing issues are that...
Let's talk about the clearing, 'cause one of the things is, and I'm sure, I wanna make, we wanna make clear that when we talk about clearing, we're not, or revegetation, we're not talking about general landscape items, we're talking about indigenous species and indigenous plantings with leaf litter and all that stuff, that the planning department has to approve, right? So, we want, and I know they brought that up in the, in the town.
Yes, and I spoke to Mike about that.
And a lot of surveyors that are not from here don't understand that, so we just wanna make sure that's cleared. But, and it looks, it appears you're trying, you're looking, you're bringing the clearing to within the limits, but what I'm, would be looking for is some additional vegetation on the wetland side of the pool and the residence. You don't appear to be...
Oh, yes.
Vegetating on that side of the house.
Um...
Right?
Yeah, I think the issue is, and Michael will touch on this, is with the, when you take away the rhododendrons, that don't count for vegetation or revegetation. So, it's close, you're allowed 14,963 and you're proposing 13,945, so you're within 1,000 square feet. Is that correct? Well, it says 19, what's the times 0.75, Michael? On the survey, it says allowable, it says 19,950 times 0.75, Michael? Equals 14, I was wondering what that, equals 14,000, I'm looking on, I'm looking on the survey dated, let's see...
March 25th.
Let's see the revision date. Where is the revision date? Yeah, March 25th. Do you have that in front of you, Michael? Yeah. I'm wondering what that deduction of the 0.75, is it because of a, are we, is it an overlay district or something? Okay, well, while Michael looks, oh, do you, you wanna pop up for a second, Michael? Can you just come up just for a second? I'll go ahead and swear you in right away, Michael, if you will introduce yourself.
Yeah.
You wanna introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Mike Delali, Planning Department.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Michael.
That's just the residential restrictions, the 75%, so the lot area multiplied by the 75%.
Oh, yes, so they allow, so they allow...
So, their allowable is at 14,900, or 14,963 square feet. They're proposing, as you indicated...
As I said, so they're within 1,000 square feet, so if the rhododendrum don't count...
Yeah, it's the, it's the...
Oh, it's a clearing.
The rhodos, the...
It's not the revege, go ahead.
The landscaping plants, but also the removal of the vegetated surface cover, the removal of the leaves, that all of those are indicative of clearing. You may not remove the plants, but if you remove...
The undisturbed.
Surface story, the understop, any of that stuff, it counts towards clearing.
So, would you say if...
So, we may want an updated survey reflecting the clearing slightly more accurately than...
Yeah, or the other thing is, if this were to be approved, it would have to be conditioned upon an updated survey that met, that met the planning department's definitions of...
Correct, and if it was down to be over, clear that they would be vegetate, correct, yeah.
And be vegetate, correct.
They could mitigate some of it, as we mentioned, indicated by doing a, you know, maybe a buffer along the wetlands or something like that. It could buy them a little more away. That way, depending on how the survey comes back, they might end up on the right side of things.
Okay, great, and we can touch on this later, but maybe we could think about, if it were approved, that we could make that condition, some of the conditions.
And we would be amenable to that, we're happy to do that.
Yeah.
Whatever they require, we're, you know, with regard to that, we could work with them and they tell us.
Yeah, that's okay, you could work with Michael, he can give you the plant list and they can help you out and steer you along with that.
And he said he would send, I talked to him today, he would send me what the indigenous plants are and all that, because we're not really familiar with that.
Yeah, he's very helpful, yep.
No palm trees.
No, we don't like palm trees, unless we're in Hawaii.
Okay, continue, please, we'll move along here.
Okay, so, I think I spoke about five of the seven variances. The next one is, it says fencing. It says a 51-foot variance, which is 49 feet from the wetlands. And I believe he's talking, you're talking about the fence that's, like, from the side of the house?
On the cross, yeah.
Across, like, that goes along both sides of the house, but one is on the wet fence side?
Yes.
So, that's, oh, is he talking about that one or is he talking about this? I think he's talking about this fence.
No, no, that's proposed. Oh, I don't, you don't...
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a separate one.
Yeah.
I think, let me just show, Mike, can I just show you this to make sure we're talking about the right, what I think it is? Are you talking about this proposed fence with gate right here?
Yeah, there's one that is existing and one that is proposed.
Yeah, this is, yeah, that's number...
So, there's two separate variances.
Yeah, yeah, so there's two different fences we're talking about. One is proposed, which is, it goes along from the side of the house toward the wetlands.
Okay.
And he puts it on both sides of the house, which I believe is a requirement if we put a pool in, that's the reason for it.
Right.
And the necessity for it. So, again, that's, you know, with the pool, there'd be a necessity to have fencing.
We understand.
Okay. And then the other one is the fence that goes along there, which is the deer fence.
Right.
Which my dad did have put in, I don't know when, I think maybe, I don't know, maybe five years ago? He passed three years ago. So, that's what it was for and we'd like to maintain it.
Well, we'd wanna make, if we did approve this, we'd wanna make a condition that you get AR or A or B approval for all your fences and gates. So, if you do not have ARB proof of that approval, conditionally, you'd have to go back and get that.
Okay.
I mean, this board's allowed to give you the variance, but we'd want to make sure that the existing, the heights of the gates and all that other stuff, it either meets your approval or you'd have to come back for a variance for the height of your fence and the height of your gates, if it doesn't meet ARB approval.
So, we have to get their approval first and then...
Well, we could make it a condition that before you get a building permit, you get these things worked out.
Okay.
Okay?
It depends if you're...
Or you could lower the fence.
Right, it depends if you're seeking to keep the height as it exists.
Yeah.
Because the ARB does not have approval to, or doesn't have discretion to approve a fence and a gate that high.
So, they're just not gonna approve it?
They can't, if it, if it is eight feet in a front yard.
Right, and those driveway gates are problematic, too, because they exceed the height, I think they're supposed to be...
So, what you're probably gonna want to do is, you're going to want to speak with the Architectural Review Board, and if you go in the planning department office, someone can help you with that. And get the credentials and review what you have, and maybe you can measure your heights and you can say, we've got a seven-foot fence, and they might say, you're gonna have to either get a variance from the ZBA or you're gonna have to cut that down to six feet. So, you're gonna wanna make a visit there and start working on that.
Yeah, you're going to think about, think about what you want. If you want it to remain as is, you can take that to the ARB, and they can tell you, and you could look at the code.
But you think they're going to tell us? No.
They might, it, I don't know how high it is, but I can tell you if it's.
I think it's, it's definitely at least seven feet, if not eight, I know it's.
Right, eight feet they can approve in a front yard.
Think about if six feet might be.
Six feet, you would need approval from the ARB and not the ZBA. If you wanted to keep anything that is above the discretion of ARB, you're back to the ZBA for a variance from that section.
So if you don't want to take that route, you can get all of the legislation, go around and measure your fences, and if a fence is seven feet and it's supposed to be six feet, you can have somebody or yourselves make those adjustments, and then we would need, somehow we would need a, a proof of that, um, you know, to, you might have to pay a fee to have the planners go out and inspect it or somebody, we could work that out, I guess. Michael could maybe guide you with those steps.
Do you know if that's something that would have to be done before we get a building permit, or something that would be a condition of?
Uh, I'd say it probably should be before you get a building permit. Typically, before you get a building permit. We want to make sure that these things.
Okay, so we would have to start working on that right away.
Yeah. We have to move along here, okay?
And I'd just say.
We're giving you a lot of time here, so we have to really move along.
Then the likelihood of getting a gate variance, a height variance, is probably pretty slim, so you might want to comply with, you might want to comply.
Yeah, I highly recommend that.
Can I just submit to you, I did get, um, just to the extent that it helps, there's a Barnes Landing Architectural Review Committee.
Sure.
Which we submitted our plans to, and they wrote a letter on our behalf.
Sure, you can submit whatever you want.
Okay, I have three copies, can I just, here, I'll come over.
Okay, okay, thank you. We're going to move along now and, and hear from the planning department and the public next, okay? And then you, you can have a closing comment, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there weren't many in the file, maybe they're buried.
So that's the latest survey based on what they've just told us tonight.
Are those all, three copies are the same thing?
No, there's, uh, let's see what they are. Um, yeah, it looks like these are three from the same person. It's the same letter.
From the homeowners association.
But it's from the homeowners association.
Oh.
Evening again, board members.
Oh, yes, thank you, Michael, thanks, Michael. Good evening, Michael.
No problem. Uh, regarding the fences and gates, um, it would be, James can double check me, but four feet without ARB approval, I believe, um, or, and, uh, six, they were, they can approve up to six, um, in the front yard. Also, their, your gates are.
Four feet.
Oh, okay. Um, the gates are actually in the road right away, so they may want to look at that. And if they intend to leave them there, they'll, going to need to get a letter from the highway department saying they're okay with it, or you can pull them onto your property, um, and, uh, and do that.
Is, do your fence approved as, uh, pool enclosure? Is it, was it proper pool enclosure?
I don't know.
No, you're right.
Offhand.
Yeah, that's another thing.
I would, I, I, I mean, just.
I mean, that's for.
Seeing it, I, I'm in, I'm inclined.
To say no.
To say no.
Yeah.
Just because it tends to be a little forgiving.
It's not far off our board's side of that, but.
And it's not going to, it's not going to stop me, I'll tell you that, if I'm going to the pool.
But just to let you know, Carolyn, it is, right? Yeah, just to let you know what we're talking about, is you've got to make sure the, the deer fence is not the same, usually, may not be the proper material for a pool fence. So you've got to find out.
Generally, wire fence.
Work with your architect with Michael, he, he can look into the pool fence code. You've got to meet the latches, the springs on the latches, the swing of the fence, the spacing, the strength, so.
The spacing of the mesh.
Yeah, so just, if you just please look into, for them, look into that and make sure that all of your pool fencing and gates meets, uh, New York State, um, residential code, okay? Okay, thank you, Michael, go ahead.
Regarding the cellarway, um, I took a look at the plan, it seems they're meeting the two-foot separation, so that is a concern no longer, kind of a no longer of ours. Um, I do believe it is likely the most conforming location, um, on the lot without having to pull up the existing deck or rearrange the property significantly. The majority of the, the project is over the existing footprint, I believe that most of the additions are occurring over the existing garage. Um, the, to me, the, the largest concern with this, um, is the pool. If, if the board feels it meets the standards, um, it's, when you look at the plan that was submitted for the pool, it's a relatively shallow pool because of the depths of groundwater. Um, it's, you know, I, they could improve it by moving it closer to the house, closer to the existing deck. Um, I don't necessarily know if that would improve the wetland setbacks without making, you know, I think the best way to do that would be to make the pool smaller. So I think that's the biggest thing for the board to discuss, is the pool and whether they feel it needs, it meets the standards required for the variances. I'm inclined to agree with Board Member Delene that a, a buffer, uh, along that wetland edge, um, would be, would definitely be a bonus, it would help them with the revegetation, the clearing numbers, any issues with that. That wetland is also, um, the only spot that I've seen northern wild raisin, um, which is not something we see very often in our wetlands up here. I believe Brian has seen it twice, um, during his career, um, so.
I'm sorry, what was that twice?
Northern wild raisin, um, it's a shrub, um, it's a wetland shrub.
What's the name? One more.
Northern wild raisin.
Wild raisin.
Yeah.
What was interesting to me is, I, which I didn't realize, that these wetlands contribute to Fresh Pond, right?
Yeah, um, so this whole complex runs into Fresh Pond, I believe I have another, maybe, oh, it's close up, maybe this one. So Fresh Pond ends up coming.
Yeah.
Down over here. Um, Fresh Pond is, um, a bracket system that, um, for the last number of years hasn't had the best of health. Um, I believe there's no, the town no longer does swimming activities over there, um, any sort of recreational activities.
Yeah.
For the most part.
They used to, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So this, you know, the introduction of a sanitary, uh, the IA sanitary system in this close proximity would be a bonus.
Yeah.
Towards that, and, and hopefully keeps spurring that along in the area, um, to hopefully work on that.
And if, as, as they may need some help with the revege anyway, um, um, Michael, if this board were to consider a buffer between the pool and the wetlands somewhere along the edge of the pool, maybe up to the stairwell, the cellarway, would you, would you feel that ten feet would be beneficial, would be a, a number that might be meaningful?
Um, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the board. Um, I think ten feet would be, it would allow enough room around the cellarway.
Yeah.
You know, you wouldn't be getting too close, less than we want, or something.
And the pool as well, you've got twenty feet to the corner of the patio.
Yeah, um, I, I think that's a fair number, um, ten foot along that, uh, along that southern section of the parcel.
Yeah, I would think you'd want to run it, um, you'd want to run, run it south of the pool, you know, up, up at least to the existing house or something like that, you know?
Yeah, um, I mean, the wetland extends to the road, I mean.
Yeah, it does.
We should discuss.
Actually.
Possibility of extending it the length of the property.
Yeah, it could go, yeah, to the length of the property would be beneficial, would also help you with them, with, with your, with your clearing numbers, you know?
Yeah.
And you'd be able to leave the rhododendrons and some other stuff perhaps, so.
Yeah, it may balance out.
Just so you know, if we approve this, that might be a condition of your approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Mike, going back to something you said, they, they could move the pool closer to the existing deck.
Correct.
As opposed to, right now, there's steps.
Yeah, right now, there's, there's two steps down, it looks like about.
If you do that, it doesn't look like it's helping you much.
It, wetlands, it's not. Um, the biggest thing that that would have an implication on would be the clearing numbers, because you would be able to pull the, um, the pool closer to where the existing area is marked as cleared. That would be your biggest, your biggest win on that, in terms of the wetlands, it's a break even point.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's neither here nor.
So what exactly, there are two steps down from the existing deck, and there's.
I'm going to guess probably about two to three feet, and then it's a step up to the pool deck.
Right. Looks like the deck is separated by about five feet.
Yeah.
From the existing, I mean, the pool deck from the existing.
From the existing is about five feet.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Michael. Any questions from Michael, board members?
Is any of that a nature preserve where those wetlands are? Driving around, looking at it.
Yeah, um, I believe it is, here, we've got open space here. Um, this whole area.
Yeah.
Is open space. The wetlands run right through here. Um, unfortunately, it appears that that is privately owned.
Yeah.
It may be, I didn't look into it, it may be reserved space for, um, from something else. Um, it doesn't exactly look like it's a buildable lot, um, but I don't know offhand.
Yeah, a lot of wetlands there, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this application? No? Okay. Seeing none.
Anything else you want to add?
Yeah, go ahead, go for it.
I just wanted to say, we really like to do this project, um, we also care about the environment, um, we have no problem putting in any kind of barriers or, you know, buffers that you think is appropriate.
Yeah, it would just be a planted buffer.
Yeah, we're happy to do that, and as far as the pool goes, we would like to have a pool there. If it makes you more comfortable moving, moving it closer to the deck, we'll design something that works that way. My husband's actually a swimming pool installer, and he'll be designing it, and we put it there because that's where it fit on the plan.
Yeah.
With all the different setbacks, um, but if we need, we'd like it that size, but if, if for some reason that gets it closer to the deck and makes you guys more comfortable, given the variance.
Well, it's nice to know that you're amenable to the buffer, because that could mitigate.
Yeah, we'll do that, and we also plan on, along the back of the property, there is, if you see where there's that deer fence, and then we have property beyond that.
Mm-hmm.
My husband also wanted to put, there is, that is, um, vegetated there, but he wanted to put more of a buffer back there also, um, just, you know, for the neighbors behind us, just to have like a buffer.
Good.
Um, we don't know what kind of plants, but we're going to find that out.
You can work with Michael, you can set you up with that. Great.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you, and thanks for being so, um, clear and coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we can.
So, I think.
Okay, therefore, Mr., what? We can close it.
Yeah.
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing and the record for Carolyn and Michael Smith. Um, and that is located at twenty-two Roberts Way, Robbins Way, a Suffolk tax map number three hundred dash one zero three dash zero six dash one nine.
Concur. And I concur, thanks, Frank. Okay, thank you all, thank you, Michael. And Michael, and Michael.
Michael, 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 and Michael.
Shh. Okay, we'll get going with our next public hearing this evening. The applicant is Rue Rue Property LLC. Lot size and location is eighteen thousand, eight, pardon me, eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty-seven square feet total at one one four Bayview Avenue, Ambeghansett, tax map number three hundred dash eighty-four dash one dash seven point one. Description is to allow an approximately one hundred foot, one hundred linear foot sandbag GeoCube revetment to remain on a parcel of land containing barrier dunes, beaches, tidal and freshwater wetlands, and tidal surface waters. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit, NRSP pursuant to two fifty-five dash four dash twenty and a variance from, uh, two fifty-five dash three dash eighty-five coastal erosion overlay district regulations, and any other relief necessary from the town code is required to allow a coastal erosion control structure to remain on a property where the installation of new coastal erosion control truck, control structures is prohibited. This is in an AE residence zone, the flood zone here is AE flood zone, elevation ten, VE flood zone elevation twelve, and the secret class here is unlisted. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
Okay, so it could be in the file.
Oh, let me see in the file, it's here.
The original.
Oh, I see, I think I see it here, yep.
Do we see?
Probably the same as this one. Do you want me to keep a copy too, or is, do you want to keep that for your file? We have the original, so we're good.
Okay.
The affidavit of posting and the affidavit of mailing seem to be in order, board has jurisdiction.
Okay.
You want the file?
Thank you, Jameson. Before we get going, um, counsel, um, we noticed in the, in the, the attorney, Mr. Tarbit's, um, legal memo, that he's requesting a time extension, and I did not see that in the, I don't know if that was properly noticed, because that's really not in the application, and, um, so I think we might have to have a little conversation. John, maybe I'll come up, and I don't have to swear you in, maybe you can come up, John, and we can discuss this, uh, with counsel here, because, um, you may be confined to deal, to discuss what the variances are, that were publicly noticed here.
Well, in that case, if that was the board's conclusion, then I would ask for, to, to adjourn the hearing for tonight and come back on a, a night when it was properly noticed, uh, because I think it's an important, uh, really issue we should address. However, these are all notice, that include, all these notices include the right for the board to grant as lesser relief as the board may determine. So I believe by the way it was noticed, that granting lesser relief, no, we're not, it was granted for a permanent coastal erosion structure, and we're asking for temporary sandbags. So I think by being the lesser included request, it is overnoticed, as opposed to not noticed, which, so I think you could hear it, but I'll defer to your judgment on that, and if, but if you do think that you can't, I, I really doesn't make any sense to hear half of the application without it being prop, so if you don't, if you, if you only wanted to hear half the application, I would say, well, let's just adjourn it and come back and.
Well, I, I guess, what is the relief you're seeking?
Sure.
Tonight?
So, um, approximately a year ago, Anne Glennon, the building inspector, determined that the house was in imminent danger of being washed away.
You know, we can't, we don't want to get, it's, you, you read his legal memo, right?
Right.
He's looking, we, I don't, I don't want to get into your whole.
I was, answer your question, I wasn't.
I know, but still, he's asking for an extension of, they were granted the time, he's asking for a time extension. So just, I just don't want.
Understood, I.
Yes.
So how about we do this, what was on your application?
We initially applied for, um, for, um, well, to keep the sandbags, but for, uh, so.
And then.
It might have been under a different section of the code.
Yeah, maybe we should let Brian.
And then what was on the poster and on your notice, or your, uh?
We'll do whatever the board wants.
Your mailing.
I know you will, John, thank you.
It makes sense to hear part of the application.
No, I know you will. Let's hear from Brian, Frank.
Sure.
Thank you, you can stay up there, John, or whatever you want, yeah.
Because my, I just, well, just to finish the thought, if what was mailed out and what was posted cited those two sections, and then the language and any additional relief, then we might be okay capturing the additional relief that he seems to be seeking.
Yeah, it does, it does say any other relief necessary.
I see that on the, on the agenda, I just, I don't have the file of, if, if it was, if that was what was, the neighbors were notified that we were considering and.
I believe.
We have the actual posting memo, the posting.
Right, right, I, I believe that's, yeah, that is the last, if, if this is typically what's going out, the public hearing notice, the last sentence does say any other relief necessary.
That's the sir.
But let's get.
Okay.
And let's get, I'm like, I don't want to cut you off, Jameson, but let's get Brian, if you have a comment you'd like to make, please.
The application was submitted by First Coastal Corporation as the agent.
Mm-hmm.
Applied for a natural resources special permit and a variance from the coastal erosion overlay district regulations, which is the relief that is required to consider an erosion control structure where erosion control structures are prohibited.
Are prohibited, right.
That's been the established practice on every erosion control application that we've had in either erosion control district one, two, or three.
Right.
Um, the concept of asking for a variance from the emergency provisions was not raised until last Friday.
Right, right. And in the past, have, I'm trying to think if, unless, when others have come, have there been other time extension requests for emergency coastal structures?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I was trying to think, the last five years, I can't...
These GeoCubes are a relatively new phenomenon, and, you know, we're going to discuss it a little bit. Look at what happened in Curtis. That was kind of a bit of...
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to get into my presentation now, but I respectfully think it's important for the board to hear this, close it, and decide it as quickly as possible. This is an existing structure that has expired. Its legal permissibility...
Is over.
Has lapsed. The idea that, well, we'll just come back in, you know, in a month or two is...it makes a mockery out of every everything...every reason that you have environmental regulations in your code.
Right. And then Nigel Curtis, we're still waiting for follow-up on the secret...on the...
Again, you know, I'll mention that, you know, as I get through my presentation. But let's be clear about what is this application is for.
Right.
You're being asked to allow a structure to remain that is physically present and has been since last July.
Right. Right. So you're saying, obviously, you would like us to go with the any other relief necessary and go through with the hearing?
Well, you know, I think it's important to move this application along and not keep it in the limbo of, you know, we've got one foot in, one foot out, kind of...you know, that kind of gamesmanship does occur in other applications to kind of run the clock out or extend the clock.
I know, we see that all the time.
And when you're dealing with something that I believe is causing a problem, and I think I'm going to be able to establish that pretty clearly, that would be...I don't think that's supported by any of the regulations in your code, your LWRP, or anything else.
Right. Thank you, Brian. I guess, board, do we agree that we would like to move forward?
I would agree.
Yep.
Yes. Jameson, are you okay with that, fitting that under legally, fitting that under any other relief necessary, yourself legally?
I'm okay with that, if that's the relief that they're seeking. I mean, I just want to clarify, though, that the...because I looked at your memo, are you not seeking relief under those two sections that were noticed? It's so really the...yeah, it's really...my question is just is under the any and other relief is that's really your only relief that you're seeking right now?
We're first seeking an extension of a variance from a section of the code which limits the sandbags to being there for six months with a three-month extension.
Right.
If the board doesn't feel the need to grant that or doesn't want to grant that variance, then we would seek in the alternative their Natural Resource Special Permit for permanent sandbags, which is not what we want. We would like to remove these sandbags as soon as...and I'll get into it later, but as soon as we can relocate our house out of dangerous way, these sandbags would be removed.
Okay, I'm okay proceeding as long...because he wants this hearing to be...to consider the variances that originally were applied for, and this is just an additional...
Yeah, I say, let's hear it.
Additional section that they're seeking relief from.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Okay, so therefore, we will...board members, you're all okay, board members, with moving on here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Jim, you good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will do my field report. This is in my...this is in my Ambeghansett district here. If you would, Jameson.
Is it under this or hearing?
I think it might be under...yeah, that's it. I think there's one before that. It doesn't matter too much. The one...it's fine, the one before it is...it was properly posted.
Oh.
But it's fine if you just go in the order they are. It doesn't...that's fine. So this is...this is coming in, walking in the driver that was chained off. It was properly posted. So this is a view towards the water. You see in the left side, that's the top of the sand on the GeoCubes that was...looks like it was planted properly. And does not appear to be damaged up top there. Next, please. Now I've stepped up on the deck, and you see those plantings on the left and the sand right up to the deck or just below it. Again, I'm looking...look in the distance. You see that other building out in the water there, you know, that we saw earlier? Now I've walked down to the deck. You see the same view in the background. And you start to see the...we'll call that the northeastern edge of the GeoCubes where they turn back into the landward. Excuse me. And now I've turned around, I'm looking up to the west, up the beach. And again, that's the deck on the left side of the photo, the planting, and just the very tops of the GeoCubes on the right. And then I think they're stacked three high, and they stepped in.
What's the planting? You're saying they planted beach grass or something?
That's beach grass, yes.
Yeah. Got it.
Now, does that extend beyond this property?
Yeah, sure does. And that's something I think we're going to want to discuss with Brian Frank as well. Because you'll see in the next picture, I walk up the beach. This is a little out of water, but that's okay. So that's looking...that's the extent of the GeoCubes. That's...this is kind of from the northeast, looking back at that corner, and, you know, and that's...that's basically the subject property. But the GeoCubes continue to the right of the photo, which would be to the west, which you'll see in the other photos. You see how far they go. It's a long line of them. It goes all the way up around the adjacent property and returns back. And I'm kind of curious...
And there's grass.
What's going on...and there's grass planted on the top there. I'm kind of curious what's going on as far as extensions of time and as far as that property next door, if that's a code enforcement issue as well. And...
Yeah, that's a bulkhead, do they have there?
Yeah, in the distance?
No, it's GeoCube.
The house next door, those are GeoCubes also?
Yeah, it continues.
It contin...oh.
We also have a neighbor here this evening that we'll hear from later, a gentleman I met when I was there who's going to speak about the road being...the access road being closed off between these two buildings, but I'll leave that until a public comment period. But just so you know, there is space between the two buildings, obviously, that you see. And here you see the extent. I've walked up the beach. That's the neighbor...on the right side, that's the neighbor to the west, and the subject property is...can you zoom...can you enlarge that, please, Jameson? Thank you. You see the extent. It's a lot of GeoCubes. Can somebody...can you tell those guys? Thank you, Brian. And then again, here, now I've kind of walked back up. And again, just to kind of...I want to actually give you a shot of the beach. You can see it's a...it's a pretty healthy beachfront there. Pretty deep, healthy beachfront there. And that may be it. Oh, there's...oh, maybe I forgot to send the...it was properly posted. I have another photo.
There's another file.
Oh, there might be...
This, I don't...no, this might be...
That's okay. That's fine. It was just a picture of the placard. It was properly posted. Okay, board members, any questions on that field report?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Now we'll hear from the applicant's agent, I believe, John. Good evening, John, again.
Hi, John Tarbit for the applicant, again. So I know there are neighbors here who are upset, and I've heard, because they went to the trustees, and I'm aware of what goes on in town, that there are neighbors that are upset. One, how the sandbags just look. They look horrible. As well as, there's an accident...this is an old filed map with an urban renewal overlay. So there is a strip of land between us and the neighbors, which have sandbags in front of it. Those sandbags now being exposed pretty much prevent access to the beach. We have a five-year DEC permit, which requires us to keep those sandbags covered in sand. However, originally, it didn't allow you to put any sand on it during pipe and pullover nesting season, which is of course occurring in the spring now. So we went back to the DEC, and we have permission to now recover all of the sandbags, including the access point with sand, which would make it out originally done, which is you have a walkway, which is how like if you go to Long Beach Island in New Jersey or any of those communities, typically you have a walkover. And that's what that would look like.
Can I ask you, when was the last time...now, these are...with your emergency permit, you are, I believe, you're supposed to keep these covered with sand at all times, correct?
Reasonably practical, right? Like, it doesn't make any sense to do it in the middle of winter during nor'easters or something, but yes.
Right. Again, Brian will have comments on this as well. But when's the last time that any attempt was made to keep these covered?
When they're put in?
I'll go ahead and let me swear you in for the evening. If you could give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Aram Turchunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York.
Thanks, Aram. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. The bags were originally covered in, I believe, July of last year, and were planted, and beach grass was planted. I don't recall the exact date in the winter when they...when the sand was washed away, but it did occur over this past winter. The conditions were such that we couldn't get to the beach to place additional sand. And as Mr. Tarbit said, as the conditions changed, and now we have an ability to get onto the beach, we've requested and received a modification from the DEC to place the additional sand.
When were the conditions so bad that you couldn't get there?
Oh, there's multiple nor'easters over the winter. I mean, the water was up against the bags on, you know, many occasions.
You have photos of that?
I don't have them with me. I may have some.
Yeah. I would think that'd be kind of valuable for your cause, because it looks...to me, it looks like a pretty healthy beach today, what I see there, and, you know. But anyway, I think those would have been good to bring along. Anyway, thank you, Aram.
Are you asking because you don't think the danger now, or because you are upset?
Well, I'm wondering why they weren't...
I'm trying to understand the reason.
I guess I'm wondering...the reasoning is you're supposed to keep them covered as far as the neighborhood and the neighbors and...
Right.
And the whole purpose of the project, right? Is the GeoCubes ought to be covered by sand, and I'm wondering why they're not covered by sand.
Oh, so I wasn't sure. I thought maybe you were saying that because of beaches...so the beach looks as good as it's ever looked right now. I was wondering if you were just saying that there might not be any danger at this point because the beach has gotten so wide. But you're not saying that. You're just saying...
I'm not saying that. I might be thinking that, though, but...
Oh, I'm trying to get to what you're thinking, because you made the comment.
Well, first of all, why...
In order to answer effectively, I wanted to know what you were thinking.
Okay, maybe I'm thinking both.
Okay. So this is unlike the ocean where Montauk, for example, where you have...you have erosion take place and the water just stays.
Yeah.
This property lost 40 feet of its property the year before we put the sandbags in. That doesn't come back. You don't get that bluff back. But in the summer, you have a nice beach there, unless if you...and Aram has a picture of it. Before we put the sandbags in, there's an old septic system. I mean, the beach was a disaster.
Yeah, we saw that. That's in Brian's or something. We saw that picture.
Yeah, so...and it's basically what it would look like at Mulford. Right now, if you go to the end of Mulford, you have...of course, you have a house out in the water, but you also have these two houses, one of which this board approved are armored revetment for. And you have another house, which I don't know...despite a lot of efforts, I couldn't figure out what is going on there as far as legality, but there's a lot of rocks and sandbags and stuff going on. There's no beach.
And you see some old covers there, too.
There's no beach there. So that's what happens if the person's told they can't do anything, right? Their house eventually gets washed away or undermined, and there'd be no beach. In our case, our beach was undermined. We had an old septic system, and the deck was undermined. There was no beach. And then we came in, we put the sandbags in, and then we built the beach up.
When did you start the revetment? When did you get the permit?
It would have been like early summer last year.
Right. So, and the property was acquired when?
2017, I think. And then we lost 40 feet of beach.
I think it was...
16.
It was when?
I think it was 16.
16? So the house is how old?
Late 70s, I think.
So somebody buys it?
He would...no, he built it.
Somebody buys it in 2016 and declares imminent danger to the house?
We lost...no, we lost 40 feet of beach.
When?
In one winter, after we owned it. 40 feet of land...that wasn't beach, it was lawn.
Right. Again, my point being...my point being that the house was recently acquired, and suddenly we have this massive revetment there, and the house was there for many, many years, in imminent danger.
Sure. No, no, it wasn't in imminent...
I know, but we know...we'll hear from Brian on that, on whether he thinks that is or not, but, you know.
Well, so when the house originally built, there was 300 feet.
So I would...that would be a self-created hardship, would you not say?
I didn't cause...they didn't cause the erosion. I'm not sure.
Well, they purchased the property knowing the danger of the property.
Well, you could look to the fact that just before purchasing the property, this board approved armored revetment for the neighbor to the east.
Not this board.
Well, it's the zoning board. You might be a new member, but it's the zoning board, right?
Right, I know.
All right, all right, let's continue.
Go ahead.
I don't...well, I'm just trying to answer. You said it was a self-created hardship, and I disagree.
Yeah, sure. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. The back and forth helps, because we're trying to get...
Okay, I understand.
It helps.
Okay. So again, you just have to look at Mulford to see what the beach would look like without the sand. So a lot of that beach, at least partially what that beach is, is the sand that washed off our sandbags, right? So somebody gets washed right in front of the sandbags. We want to keep it covered. The...we went back to the DEC, we got permit. I can cover that...I can cover those sandbags tomorrow, and it looked beautiful. The town's not letting us. So if the town says, go ahead and cover the sandbags, I can have the sandbags covered, at least for our property. I don't speak for the neighbor, but I can speak for our property. We don't want to look at the sandbags either, right?
Didn't you fill out a permit for a period of time?
Five...we've got five years from the DEC.
But the town not wanting it covered at this point is beyond the time that it's supposed to be there, right?
So I can speak to that.
April 19th.
So this section of the code, emergency permit code, was written originally by Rick Whalen 20 years ago, not adopted. It was finally drafted again by Denise Schern and adopted by the town board. At that time period, it was really easy. If you had...so what happens is the building inspector has to determine it's an imminent danger to the structure and/or life, right? And then also that putting the sandbags in won't cause any immediate harm to the environment. Once she makes that determination, she gives you six months to figure out a solution, right? You know, we don't want you to lose your house. Here's six months of protection. Figure something out. And if you can't figure it out, here's another three months. Well, when Rick Whalen originally wrote that, and he'll be happy to tell you that, nine months was something that...and we all know now, and Rick...not Rick. Nine months is no longer, you know.
Well, no, no. Maybe the code needs to be changed in another way. Maybe the code...the building inspector shouldn't have the authority to do it in and of herself. Maybe it should go into review into the planning department, natural resources. So maybe that should be the requirement of this code, not changing the timeframe.
That's possible, but remember, the reason is that...
Right, so that's what's happening. Now, all of a sudden, we have this influx of revetments on this shore, because houses are changing, and there's wherewithal to get these permits. And we are getting a long line of revetments on this property where the town doesn't want them.
Well, there are six groynes and/or revetments within a half mile of our property to the east. So the cat in that stands already out the bag, right? Everybody has one. We're the last in the line. The toral drift goes from east to west, and then we have 200 acres of state parkland to our west, and then the old fish factory, which has also armored. So everybody has either predated zoning and had either a groin, and Aram will speak to it. The sand has not changed in 50 years, half mile to our east. There's no erosion. Because these guys all have groynes and/or revetments. The other thing that's significantly hurting this property is the opening of the western channel to Napier. No doubt about it.
John, for me, for me, hearing this, all that is fine, but again, the property was just recently purchased. All this was known. All that history was known. The fish factory was there for years. Everything is there.
Okay.
So the owner has...
Let me speak to that.
You know, the owner has...is responsible for...
Let me speak to that. We bought two properties, okay? We bought this property as well as the one to the south, right behind us. So it was reasonable when we bought it...and when we bought it, we had 40 to 50 feet of lawn in front of our house. So it was reasonable to think that she could buy it, maybe get it five to 10 years before... and because prior to...the year before we bought this property, it was...and Aram will speak to this, the erosion rate had reduced. It was down like four feet a year. And we had 40 feet. So we figured, oh, you know, five, 10 years. That winter, 40 feet of lawn goes. Now it's an urgency to get the house moved back to the property we bought behind us. So we get the sandbags for the immediate protection, and we start working on an application to move the house back. And that's where we are now. I'm ready to submit an application. I have a house designed, septic system engineered by Drew Bennett. Saskus has done...Brian's been flagged...this winter, we worked with Brian Frank to flag the property accurately, so we knew where to place the house. It's ready to go, and we have an application to move this house back onto...at least partially onto...the problem with the property behind is it has wetlands.
And when was that application submitted?
It's not submitted. It's ready to go.
Okay.
It takes...we worked with Brian Frank. He can speak to that. We've been working with him all winter to have the property. When it came...and I said that in my memo, when it came to me, there was a hope that we could rebuild this house on the front property. that we could, we could rebuild this house on the front property, and, uh, it's just not practical, with the needs for, the new septic system would take up so much room, and with the erosion rate, you gotta, you gotta go back to the other property, so we're going to merge both properties, uh, and try to retreat, um, but before we do that, we need to protect what's there, and, um, that's why I wanted just an extension of the sandbag permit.
Pardon me, and the, and Brian's, and Brian can speak to this, but in Brian's, um, technical analysis memo, he states that the property appears to have been acquired by the current property owner in April 2018.
No, uh, my probably typo, uh, she's owned it for two, two years, I think sixteen was the right date. I, I think Brian will correct that, I don't, I don't think it was, it might have been transferred to an Allison.
Well, let's get back to, let's go back to your request of leaving it there, what is, on what grounds?
Well, nothing's changed, uh, the building inspector made a determination that the existing house was in imminent danger of being washed away, nobody disputes that, uh, and she said that putting the sandbags there would not cause any environmental damage. We know now that it's, the beach is beautiful, so one year later, the beach is beautiful in front of the sandbags. The only thing that is not beautiful is the sandbags themselves, which we want to recover. So I would say to you, the imminent danger has not changed, we're actively working to relocate this house southward away from the danger, and there is no environmental da- damage, uh, so-
Can I back you up a little bit?
Sure.
The building inspector made a determination of imminent danger based on, on a, on a nine month permit basis.
A six month with two-
Or six months, whatever the, whatever the permit says, six plus three, right? So, so today, you're standing here, that's gone and passed now, that time is common past, so my question is, on what basis today are you requesting reverting back, in my opinion, back to the building inspector deeming it, on, you know, uh, uh, in imminent danger, has passed? So today, you really need, you, I would be looking for an engineer's report or something to coming to us saying, it still remains in, in, that period of time has passed.
And that's why we have Aaron here from First Coastal-
I don't think her decision was made in perpetuity.
Absolutely not, I don't want it perpetuity, what I would say to the zoning board is, keep your thumb on us, right? Unlike, for example, something on Cranberry Hole Road, which, you know, you posdeck something, we could be here five, those sandbags could be there five years from now while we're working way through, like, and with no oversight. I'm saying, here's somebody who's doing everything right, they want to move their house back, keep your thumb on them, say, you know what, you can keep your sand, not, we, nobody here, nobody in this room can say that you can get through the process of building a house in nine months, right? There's, that's just, those days are long gone. But you could say, look, we, we don't want you just to use this section of the code to keep these sandbags forever, show us that in, in, in three months, you've submitted an application, or six months, and we're not gonna, if, if you don't show us progress, we're not going to extend your permit, come back to us.
Well, it's been eleven months, and you haven't had an application put in yet.
We don't have to do it, I'm just saying, you can, you can pause-
What, I'm not clear-
I'm saying it's in your benefit to keep your thumb on us, I'm not, you know-
What I'm not clear on is, you said, moving the house back, or building a new house, so which is it?
Yeah, it would be just, it, it's a new house, that house would not be kept.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how soon could you file the new application?
I can submit the new application tomorrow, uh, it was just, the last thing I needed was, uh, the septic system design, so we could, and that's been done, uh, it's, it's literally ready, it was ready a few days ago, um, I actually thought about submitting it, but I thought, I don't want to confuse tonight's hearing, because tonight's hearing is about keeping the sandbags, uh, so I could have a new application in, um, tomorrow, but to be honest, it takes twelve, typically, I don't know how long it's going to take this time, but it takes twelve months to get through to the, to see, if I submit the application tomorrow, I should expect about twelve months later, I get a hearing date, so, and then it's going to take me, all, and there's no, there's no way it would take less than a year to build the house, that's if you approve it, um, so, I mean, it's, those sandbags, we're looking at them being there at least two more years.
Is anyone living in the house?
Yes, it's actively, well, today, no, but it's, it's used, it's a second home.
Somebody is living in it?
I'm just trying to answer accurately, there's no one living there today, but there'll be someone there this summer, for sure.
And was someone living in it last summer?
Absolutely, I was there with the person, um, right after the sandbags were installed, it looked gorgeous, the, the way the top of the sandbags look, with that beautiful beach grass, is the way it looked, it had a nice little slope to it, and it looked, uh-
So I'll ask you again, I know Aaron touched on this, but I'm, I'm just, you know, curious about, about why, your, your application ran out April eighteenth of this year, right? And I'm just curious, as far as good faith and showing that you intend to do what you were supposed to be doing, I have a hard time believing that there was no, no, there was no way you could get, because I've been on that beach for other applications, and you're saying there's no way you could have replenished that sand.
If you want to doubt us, I can't, I can't, I can't make you not doubt us, right? So nothing I say is going to change your mind.
Well, Aaron can maybe, but I, I'm just surprised that you all don't come to us-
We did try.
With proof, no, let me finish.
Okay.
That you don't come to us and say, look, this is a picture in January of the beach, we couldn't get a truck on the beach, this is February, this is March, this is April, and we have noth, none of that, and we all live here, and we know the beach, and, you know, I'm, I'm having a hard time believing that, and I sure would like to see some proof.
To be honest, I would not suggest trying to recover these sandbags in, in March, uh, it would just, it would just wash away, one storm, we could lose ten thousand dollars-
Well, we don't, we don't know that, we have no proof of these storms, or photographs, or anything, what happened.
You know there's storms in the wintertime.
Yeah, but, but, you know, it's-
So I would suggest that you put the sand there, it won't get washed away in the summertime, it'll get washed away in the wintertime, and then the spring, you, you punish it, you cover them again, you can't, it's not practical to keep them covered every time there's a storm, uh, you, it's, it-
Well, then it goes to show that this, this solution doesn't make sense.
Well, I would, I would say to you what does make sense.
You're telling, let me finish, you're telling the public-
We placed sand there seven times and it washed away.
Let me finish, John, you're telling the public when you go for these applications, you're, you're suggesting we're going to have these Geo cubes, no one's going to see them, they're going to be covered with grass, we have, and I understand all this, and I know.
Sure.
And I know the storms, but it just goes to show that this is not reality, and these, these neighbors and these other people living there are going to the beach, and the town of East Hampton, public citizens who want to go along that beach, and-
We own the beach in front of our house, we're not trying to cover it, we own it though.
Look at my photos, that's what you're looking at, you saw my photos, right?
Beautiful, we own that, but it's, beautiful.
And that's what, that's what you're looking at, that's what you're looking at.
It's, now it's nice, right?
Doesn't look nice to me.
Oh, the sandbags, you see?
Yeah.
I don't want, we don't want to look at the sandbags either, we're trying to cover the D's, we-
You're not following my point, okay. My point is, it was supposed to look like a planted dune with, with Geo cubes buried that no one sees, that's the intent of your-
It's unrealistic to think that never could-
Well, then, First Coastal's should change their documentation on how they present this stuff.
You think that that's it, they're there to prevent the bluff, so when a storm comes, it washes the sand away.
Basically, what's happening is you're saying, we're going to put in the fir, we're going to put in the Geo cubes, we're going to, we're going to put sand over them, the sands could get washed away in the winter, and, and that's where it's going to be, so the town is, the town citizens are looking at a, a revetment for the rest of the year.
Or they're looking at exposed septic systems and, and house undermined, like at Mulford, look at Mulford, and by the way, I'm here tonight saying, just give me a little bit of time to move my house back, I could come to you and say, give me what you gave Mulford, I have a constitution, once you gave Mulford an armored revetment, you decided that his property was worth protecting, I have a constitutional right to equal protection. It's not like saying, hey, he got a bigger house, I got a smaller house, I'm saying, you chose his property to protect, you can't say to me, the neighbor, not you, you lose your property, and I'm saying, I don't want that, I don't want an armored revetment, I could be here tonight saying, give me an armored revetment, I'm saying, hey, I'm trying to retreat, I got a property behind me, give me time to get back there so I don't have to risk my life and property while I do that in good faith, keep your thumb on me, let me come in here every three to six months and say, what have you accomplished?
The new house you're building, the application, you made a statement earlier that you have to wait for a hearing for a year, that it's also going to require variances?
Yeah, a lot of variances, there's wetlands all over these properties.
So, so, so say that goes through, and you may or may not get that variance, first of all, you may not be heard for a year.
Yep.
And, um, so, the issue is, we might be looking at these, the neighbors and the citizens walking the beaches might be looking at these Geo cubes for a couple of years.
There's no doubt that in order to get through the process and build a house, I need a couple of years, you shouldn't be looking at the Geo cubes, you should be looking at sand, in the wintertime, you're looking at it, but you'd be, the alternative is you look at Mul, you can't even get past Mulford, so, the people in Mulford would sure prefer to have what we have, which is the beach and sandbags that should be covered, but the town won't let us. My alternative, look, I don't, I don't have a lot of alternatives here, we're not going to let the house go, just like nobody else is, throughout this town, look at it over and over, the only house I can ever think of that was let go was the house on, in Mulford that's in the water now, we have revetments all over the place, we just reveted Montauk, I'm not looking for revetment, I'm just saying, I mean, it's unrealistic to think that I'm going to say, okay, let my house go, well, you know, but, it's fine, I paid a million seven for it two years ago, the town has caused the erosion by permitting an armored revetment immediately to our east, they continue to dredge Napeague, which, without any, it, it absolutely, it's proven, it was, it was adopted by you in your zoning board decision, it's an L W R P, that the continued dredging of the eastern canal on Napeague is causing and contributing to the erosion in front of my house. The trustees could dump their sand in front of my house, it's the sand that should be in the littoral system going, going to my house, but they don't. The town's causing this problem, I mean, by all rights, there should be a, 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 a mass lawsuit by, it's a half a mile stretch of beach, there's no erosion, uh, um, the pro, the, I've lost three hundred feet in thirty years in front of my house, less than a half a mile away, there's been no erosion at all, that's to the east, all, if you look at, I'm sorry, let me point, let me show you this.
This is his house?
He's, he's saying that.
Nineteen thirty-eight, you had a, no, this coastline is perfectly straight-
Yeah, you have to speak into the mic, you know, John, you can hold it up, we, we have that too, so you can do it from there, because we know what you're looking at.
Nineteen thirty-eight, this was before the groynes.
Yep.
There's no divots, nineteen sixty-two, the groynes go in, you already see an enormous divot. Now look at this, those groynes, we're, we're in a coastal erosion zone two, everybody, everybody around us has, you know, that's supposed to be no, nobody else has, everybody has one except for us, we're the last in the line of the littoral drift. So what's happening is, by dredging the, the, uh, western side of Napeague, and allowing all these groynes, this property right here, exactly the same in nineteen sixty-two, my property, three hundred feet of erosion, less than a half a mile away. I'm not saying the town should pay for this, but they should. Instead, I'm saying, just give me time to retreat, with impermanent sandbags, I could be here tonight saying, give me an armored revetment, just like Mulford, I'm not doing that, I'm saying, we're doing the right thing, we're trying to retreat, just give us time.
Or the other thing you could, I'm just curious, have you ever considered coming for a, an emergency application to either raise your house on, on a, on, on a piling, temporary, like an emergency piling foundation, or, or move your house back forty feet, or fifty or sixty feet? Have you ever all considered that?
Well, we lost forty feet the year before the sandbags.
Yeah.
This is a chart showing the coastline in nineteen thirty-eight, superimposed in two thousand sixteen, everywhere, this is, this is a half mile away, this is the dredging of the, uh, I keep having to think to myself, the western side of Napeague, the sand, in, in, since nineteen thirty, in, in, what, eighty years, the beach is bigger, look at me, there's my sand, the town is causing this. Coastline's normal down here, there's only one section, here's all the revetments, it's ridiculous to sit here tonight and say, you know, we caused this, we gave your neighbor an armored revetment, and we're going to give you six months with a three-month extension to figure something out, to fix your problem. The town should be paying for it, but, but it's not what we're seeking, or they should be removed, they should stop dredging the western side of Napeague and remove those groynes so that everybody gets fair treatment. Instead, I'm just saying, hey, guys, keep your thumb on us, make sure we keep these sandbags covered, retreat, and that's all we're looking for. So, there's, the science is there, there's, there's no doubt, there's no doubt that by permitting our neighbors to the east to have groynes and revetments, and by continuing to dredge and dump the soil out of our system, the town is causing this problem. I don't have alternatives, I can't, I'm not going to let the house just go away, right? So, I know, nobody, nobody, none of you would either, um, so what I'm saying is, Brian wants me to try to meet the standards for an armored revetment, in that case, I wouldn't, I'd be coming here for an armored revetment, I wouldn't be saying, I want a temporary sandbag solution, so what I'm saying is, just give me a, Anne was empowered, the building inspector was empowered to give me an emergency permit for six months with a three-month extension, just let me work this out, it's all before this board, I'll be before this board as of tomorrow, I accept the application, and, um, rather than worrying about whether I, I mean, again, if I wanted an armored revetment, I'd be here tonight for an armored revetment, not for temporary sandbags. You have seen that other people have come before this board on Cranberry Hole Road, a year later, the sandbags are still there, there's no oversight of this board, the sandbags are not covered, that's going to go on for years.
Let me, speaking of going on for years, as far as variances and, and requesting variances, you know, when you do that, there's no guarantee you're going to be granted those variances, with your new plan that you are about to propose, are there opportunities there to come forward with a plan that does not involve variances, where you, where you're buying another piece of property to move this house?
We own it already.
I'm sorry?
We own the property already, we bought them both-
Right, so I'm saying, i- i- if you told us, we, we want to come back to you tomorrow with a plan-
Yeah.
-that meets the code.
I, there's, uh, there's, there's nowhere, nowhere, there's not a building of, there's not a building envelope, anywhere in the both properties that doesn't have wetlands.
There's, so there's no place, there's no conform, nothing whatsoever?
No, no.
Right. So your whole project, your whole new project is going to be a lot of variances, you're saying?
It will, yeah, yep, or, we, our alternative would be to try to raise this house, stop to meet FEMA, put it on pilings, and get an armored revetment like our neighbor. I think, you know, I, I chose what I thought was a better solution.
Or move it back, raise it up on piling, meet FEMA, and move it back?
Well, when you have forty feet a year erosion, uh, you can't really move it far enough back to, uh, to, to, to not seek some sort of permanent solution, which, you know, so, uh, the, the, again, Mulford, Cranberry Hole Road, you've seen these things before, and you have no oversight, if you posdeck me, if you tell me, uh, no to variance, then I submit my application tomorrow, but I'm not mov, I'm not going to say, hey, go sleep in that house, and by the way, it might get undermined in the middle of the night, and you might suffer injury or death, right? I mean, that's the result, that's, you know, you could have a hurricane in the middle, in August, the person living in that house, you know, you might think I'm making up, there could be a death, no one's going to subject their family to that, so the sandbags are staying, um, I'm saying, keep oversight on it, the D E C issued a five-year permit because, that's an important point, the D E C, usually when you talk about environmental damage, you talk about your surrounding properties, the D E C owns the surrounding properties, so, right, so, the Department of Environmental Control for the state of New York owns all the property around me, they sought that to give me a five-year permit and say, keep it covered with sand, it's just the town code that's unrealistic, it says, oh yeah, do it in six months, I can't do it in six months, it, it's just not realistic, maybe it was realistic twenty-five years ago when Rick wrote it, but it's not realistic now.
So what are you, you're asking that you would come back to us every-
Whatever the board saw, whatever you thought was a, whatever you wanted, I'll come back to you monthly with reports, um, I'm not looking to keep these sandbags permanently, I want to move it back, it's a tough application I'm going to be submitting, there's wetlands everywhere, um, behind me, uh, so-
It's a tough application, and it becomes tougher if you're asking for too much, obviously, and that's, that's-
Right, right.
I think this board's concerned what you, what you're going to be coming back in with, it may be completely unrealistic with regard to this board wanting to grant this variance.
Well, you could say no to it, right? You would say no to that, right, so I have to, I have to get, I, I've been submitting applications for for twenty years, I've been denied before, but I've also have submitted very fair, I, that's what I do, right, I try to submit applications that are, that are based in reality, I'm not going to submit a four thousand square foot house for that property, right, it doesn't make sense.
Right, okay, John, all right, we'll, we'll move on, and then you can-
Okay.
-come back, we'll, we'll hear from the planning department, um, next, yes, Brian? Good evening, Brian, again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Brian Frank, chief environmental analyst for the town of East Hampton, um, I want to kind of, you know, there, there's, there's a lot out there, um, there's, there's a lot in the record that I, that I don't think is accurate, I kind of like to, to start from, from the beginning.
Sure.
Um, I'm, I'm going to move to, um, showing you, um, where the property is on the aerial and, and a little bit of what's gone on there, but I want to, I want to, I want to back up a little bit, um, and talk about what your, what your, what relief this structure requires, and that is a natural resources special permit, and a variance from the coastal erosion overlay hazard, coastal erosion overlay district regulations, to allow an erosion control structure to remain in a location where erosion control structures are prohibited. I, I mean, you can discuss that with, uh, with counsel, but it, it seems pretty clear that that is the relief that is required, and there are very detailed standards associated with that, and I'm, I'm sorry, but I am going to go through them in, in somewhat painful detail, because I think, I, I think it's important, but let, let's start by taking a look at, at the road end of Bayview Avenue. Let me, let me show you in two thousand and thirteen, because I think a lot of what, a lot of what has been glossed over here is that the, the erosion in this area is somewhat chronic, I guess you have it in your folder, I didn't drag it into the folder that I'm using on the, on the smart board here, but, um, the erosion that has been going on, on this property, has been going on for, for, for quite a long time, and, and John, you know, a, a lot of what John has, I think inadvertently, he's contradicted himself a lot by saying what has, what's going on right now is an emergency, um, but at the same time, the erosion has been going on for years, and they've lost three hundred feet over a certain amount of time period, um, this is the road end of Bayview Avenue. Uh, Bayview Avenue is part of the old file map system, um, there are houses on either side of the road, um, it, it's a north-south oriented road, it starts at the south end at Lazy Point Road, and ends at Napeague Bay. On either side of the properties are, um, state parkland, it's not necessarily owned by the D E C, it is state parkland, it's, it is different, though. There are two houses at the end of Bayview Avenue, this is RuRu Properties, this is the application that you're, you're being asked to entertain the, uh, revetment at.
While you have that, that, that shot up, Brian, that road there, that is, just so we're clear, is that public access allowed on that road?
Um, well, it's a community access, it's a, it's a private road.
Yeah, for the private community.
It's a private road, but it does serve, uh, you know, the, so, you know, it depends on what you mean by public.
Well, say the people that live-
The people that live on the road are members of the public.
Yeah, the people that live on that road, do they have a right to use that to get to the beach?
Um, my understanding is yes, but I, I don't want, you know, I don't want to, um, speak to legal matters, I'd rather speak to technical matters.
Okay, I'll let you go on that for now. Okay, okay, well, maybe I'll get a comment after, before the public, just so we can-
Both houses were, were built in the, roughly in the late, in the late seventies, on what, by all rational measures, looks like a, a filled wetland. A, a lot of development occurred prior to my, modern environmental regulations, including, A lot of development occurred prior to modern environmental regulations, including, and I'll mention it again later, but in case I forget, a lot of the groynes that John is talking about when he says that the town allowed these things to be built, that's not accurate. They were built at a time when they weren't regulated, and that's much more accurate to say. So when, you know, you say this is the town's fault, the town did this, we've been developing our shorelines for centuries here, and there is, there is an art of regulatory ambulance chasing where nobody's erosion is ever natural. Mother Nature doesn't cause problems, humans cause problems, and that is something that I think the board has to factor into newer ownership on this property, because nobody ever says, my erosion is natural, it's always this activity next door, this dredging project, this thing that you guys approved, this thing that the Army Corps did in the 1930s, this thing that the county did in the 50s. You got to have a villain, you got to have a culprit, and that's, and we have to break that cycle, otherwise, we're just going to keep perpetuating the problems that people are attributing to the source of their problems until there is no shoreline left. You can see, I know you can't see it from up there, but you have hard copies of this area in your folder.
Yep.
You can see the topographic contours on here, this comes from the, I believe this is 2007 LiDAR data, light imaging and ranging data, showing what the topography was at the time, and you see what these elevations are, one foot above sea level. The areas on either side of these properties are low, they're frequently inundated, you can see docks and decks, storm debris that get thrown in here. This is a vulnerable area, these, this land that these houses are on, that John is saying, you know, gee, it's not our fault that this is eroding, this is an artificial headland, it always was from the time that this road was built. And these photos, and I don't know, I guess John took them away, but everything that John showed you? Thank you. My, our computer records show that Ruru Properties acquired this property in April of 2018. If that's a different LLC, maybe it was 2016, it's kind of irrelevant, but everything that you're seeing that went on in this property, in these photos, regardless of how accurately John summarized them, occurred before the property owner bought the property. And one thing I didn't hear anything in John's presentation about, and I think it's incumbent because it's part of the variance standards, is what kind of diligence did the property owner do in looking at the property? You don't have to be a coastal geologist, an environmental analyst, to go to the end of Bayview Avenue, look to your right, and see houses at the edge of the water, and one that's in the water. The history of erosion on this property is well documented, if you print up the building records card for the property, you can see there've been non-structural restoration activities on this property going back to at least 1993. You've got it in your file, different permits, I've got a couple of photos to show you, I want to run through the history of the property. I've been to this property many times over the years, and I, you know, some of that is well documented as of 2010, and I'm going to touch on this in a while. What's happening right now, maybe new to the property owner, because the property is new to the property owner, but the conditions have been somewhat similar to what has gone on since prior to the construction of the sandbag seawall, for at least a decade, arguably more. Where you want to draw the line is subjective, but it's pretty clear that this condition well predates the property ownership. This is where the escarpment was in 2013, this is a 2013 aerial photo, you have 2018 here, I'm sorry I didn't bring it with me for comparison, but again, this is at least four years, five years prior to the owner of the property. The house is close to the deck. It's not dissimilar from the west side of Bayview Avenue, but I really want to keep the focus on the Ruru property. The revetment, and there's not a good site plan that shows everything, but what you have is a 15-foot return along the eastern side of the property, about 110 feet across the road, and then another 110 feet, and another 15-foot return. This entire road end and the properties at the end of it have been essentially walled off.
Is the reasoning that it looks real nice today viable, a proper reasoning for the viability of the sandbags?
No.
We heard that tonight.
No, I don't think any, none of that sand that, you know, I'll get, I was going to mention this later in the presentation, none of the sand that's on the beach came from on top of that revetment. That sand was, I'm going to show you a photo from this January, when it was completely exposed. That sand, some of that sand is in the wetland, some of that sand is long gone, this is why you don't harden the shoreline, because you do want the beach to have an opportunity to recover, and you can't do that with a hard structure there. But I want to show you a photo, you may know, in 2010, the day after Christmas, on December 26th, we had a blizzard that was also an extratropical storm. It was a pretty severe nor'easter, it did a lot of damage along the shoreline here, and I was contacted by then-councilman Dominic Stanzione about the properties at the end of Bayview. Back in the day, the sanitary systems were on the north side of the houses, before there was public water there, there were wells on the south side. The December nor'easter, I have other photos, but this is Ruru, so this is Ruru in 2010, not very different, again, from the conditions that, you know, John is claiming was an emergency that warranted the need of the sandbag. This is the sanitary system that was exposed on the beach, I was asked by the councilman to help both of the property owners, it was Bunker Bay on this side and Greco Senior on the west side, to help them get permits from the health department and the DEC to get the sanitary systems off the beach and on the, obviously, the sanitary system is non-functional, the houses were not able to be occupied. I didn't bring photos of Greco, I have them if you want to see them, very, very similar, and I'm sure that doesn't surprise anybody. So the, there are extensive wetlands around the property, the planning department prepared a map for use for permitting to allow the sanitary systems to be relocated to the south side of the property, and that looks something like this. This is from, this is also from GIS, this is in 2011, the spring 2011, this cleared area was the new sanitary field, and you can see that all of this area here has been restored with beach sand. It hadn't been planted yet in this time of the photo, but I think this is an example of the non-structural restoration activities that have gone on, on this property for decades prior to the current property owner's purchase of the property. We have issued numerous, they're called expedited administrative natural resources special permit, they are only for the use of non-structural restoration and the in-place and kind repair of certain erosion control structures. This is a photo, this is in your file, this is the restoration without sandbags of the beach in 2013. This photo, just for the record, is not in your file, I know that drives some of the attorneys away, but this is the same property facing, well, maybe this is, I believe this is the same property facing West.
But your contention is that beach replenishment is an adequate source, method for maintaining that beach?
It has been, yes, among the alternatives, and I want to get into that in detail, but my point in showing you these photos is that the, also, I might as well go right into what it looked like right before the, darn it, I didn't read. I do want to show you what the beach looked like, right before the, basically right before the, the sandbag revetment was covered. You'll notice this photo doesn't look that much different from what you saw in 2010, after the December nor'easter. This is from spring 2017, I was out there for another purpose, and it seemed to make sense to document some of the conditions at the time. This property is the property at 157 Mulford, we've been discussing it as Young and Lemieux.
Yep.
By the way, again, before I forget to mention it, the revetment that John said is contributing to his erosion has not been constructed yet, that revetment has not been built yet. I want to show you what it looked like during the construction of the sandbag revetment, and I'm only going to show you a couple of photos. Take a look at the DEC permit, during the construction of the sandbag revetments, there was supposed to be sediment control in place, that never occurred. This is the excavation of the beach, this is the Ruru property here. The condition that, you know, I don't ever remember seeing a time when it looked great, but you can tell that this is the Greco sandbag revetment, covered with sand, Ruru is still under construction.
Were they permitted very closely to each other, those two?
That is, I still don't know that Greco has a DEC permit, by the way, I haven't seen it, I'm not sure about that, but I do want to run through the history a little bit.
Go ahead.
They were built, they were obviously built as one unit.
As one, yeah.
But by January 11th of this year, this is what it looked like. So, you know, John had mentioned that it's impractical to keep these buried with sand, and that the DEC gave them a five-year permit, and, you know, maybe you guys should do the same thing. But a condition of the DEC permit is that the sandbags not be exposed for more than 30 days, and if they are exposed for more than 30 days, the revetment is supposed to be removed by April. This is in January, this is pretty much how it looked until, this is pretty much how it looks.
Looks today.
And you're getting the sense from John that you cannot keep this thing buried over the winter, and that makes sense. It's in a location that's too far seaward, it's interacting with the shoreline, one of your permit standards, by the way, it is not in a sustainable location, it doesn't meet your permit standards, it's, wow. This is the road end of Bayview Avenue in January of this year. These sandbags are three feet by three feet by three feet, they weigh anywhere from between 1,500 to 1,700 pounds a piece when they're filled with sand. So this is three feet, and this is at least a foot and a half, maybe a little bit more. So, you know, you're, you know, you're talking about something that, a precipice of about five feet from the top here to the beach elevation. And I think if you go out there now, you know, you'll see something similar. So this is Ruru. One of the things I want to point out to you, and again, I'm going to run through this in the permit standards, this is sand that has been deposited in the wetland on the west side of Bayview Avenue. Now, I've been out on these properties numerous times after storms, I've seen these wetlands overwashed, I have never seen sand deposited in the wetland like this until this revetment was constructed. The sand in the wetland, obviously, it buries the vegetation in there, it alters the habitat, it reduces these wetlands' capacity to hold water, which is important to minimizing the flooding for the properties behind them. Again, this is, this is one of your permit standards, and I'm going to go through them, but I want to just show you a little documentation here, because I think John mentioned in his memorandum of law that there've been no impacts to the wetland, the DEC haven't found any impacts, or aren't any wetland impacts at all, and that's simply not true. This is the, I think this is the Greco side, and I do have some photos of the Ruru side. I'll just do it from this one. This is definitely in your file. Again, this is another shot, this is, this is the area that had been restored in previous years with sand and beach grass, prior to the revetment's construction. This is, you know, not, yeah, this is the Greco side, you can see just how big that plume is, and notice, the sand is different. It's not the orangish coarse quarry sand that was used for cover here, this is finer beach sand, and you can see kind of the same effect on the east side, just, it's not as good as a photo, but if you go out in the field, you can still see it.
Yeah, you can see the difference.
The purpose of 429, the emergency activities of the town code, was to provide some immediate options for something in a short-term crisis. It was not intended to be an interim solution while other permits were pursued. John is right when he said that the law was originally drafted by Rick Whalen, it was turned over to Denise Shern, I worked very closely with the town attorney's office at that time, including both Rick, who I think came in on his own time to help pass the baton to Denise, I worked very closely with Denise Shern and your own counsel right now, Beth Baldwin, in the adoption of the coastal erosion overlay regulate, of all of the town's coastal legislation in 2007. I attended all the public hearings, I processed the public comments for the town board, spent almost as much time as the lawyers working on this law, and it was never really discussed that, hey, put your sandbags in while you figure out what else you want to do, build a new house, build a rock revetment, explore an erosion control district. This was to prevent the immediate and short-term loss, that's why there's no real environmental review with it, because it's only going to be there for a short time.
Which is my point, I mean, what is the basis of, and I just want to stick with this point a little bit, what is the basis that allows a building inspector of her, him or hers own to deem a house, what's it called?
In imminent peril.
In imminent peril. Is she making the determination?
No, what, my opinion, I think it was inaccurately characterized by John. Part of the problem is, these permits are being issued by the DEC, and it's my understanding, and if I'm wrong on this, I'll own it, but it's my understanding that the building department is being heavily lobbied, and threatened even, to issue a similar permit. The DEC gave us a permit, you better give us a permit that matches it, or we'll sue the town if we suffer any damage over the winter. And if I'm inaccurate about that, you know, the, I don't want to call Anne a horse, but get it right from the horse's mouth. Speak to Anne Glennon, speak to the building inspector, I've seen some of the supporting documentation that reflects that. It's not Anne going out there going, oh my God, this house is in imminent peril, you better put yourself in some sandbags.
I honestly think there's something awry here, too, and that's why I think there's should be a change in the way the code is written.
Well, that is a different matter. Right now, respectfully, the issue is, what should happen to this wall? What is the relief that's necessary? What is the relief that should be granted? What should be done here? And, you know, probably guess where I'm going with this, but I do want to kind of lay out all the options, the history of the property.
Brian, before you go, you stopped short, you said that the code was written specifically for six months, for an emergency basis, not for somebody to figure out what they were going to do next, but what was the intent of it, and what was the expectation of what somebody was going to do, realistically?
All right, in my own words.
Yeah.
There are several activities that you could do with an emergency permit to kind of cut the red tape, so that you didn't have to go, you didn't have to come before the zoning board notice, do, you know, submit an application. I'm going to paraphrase it, I don't have a copy of 429 in front of me right now, but you can put down sand, you can relocate the structure, so, you know...
Do you want a copy of 429, or you can keep going?
I'm just going to paraphrase it. You can repair a structure that's been damaged, you know, the storm damages the house, you can shore it up so you don't suffer more damage, or you can do a non-structural restoration, and in certain cases, you can allow a sandbag revetment, a geotextile is the way the town terms it. And I encourage you to look at the language in 429, because there are requirements that go along with that option specifically, a set amount of time, an agreement from the applicant to remove it when that time has expired, whether it's six months or nine months, a plan for the removal, and even reference to the town having the ability to go in and remove it itself if the applicant refuses to comply. So that was the purpose of 429, to allow some short-term flexibility, maybe not even before a storm, maybe after a storm, maybe a storm comes along that actually damages the foundation of a house, and you need to get in there and shore it up. Maybe you want to get in there right away and dump sand before the next storm comes. I don't know, there wasn't a broad application of sandbags of this size in 2007 when the law was adopted, Lauder used them on Beach Lane, it probably made things a lot worse and contributed to the loss of the house in 2012 there, but I'm not sure that they were used anywhere else in town when this regulation was adopted. Lauder's the only property that I'm aware of where they were installed, and maybe there are others, but that's the only one that I knew of. So when you think of sandbags, I don't know that you were thinking of sandbags that weighed close to a ton being stacked up in, you know, in a three-course wall, but the purpose of 429 was to allow some short-term flexibility for real emergency situations, and that's why it's limited to those four activities.
And it sounds like immediate action.
Yes.
Not contemplating, but rather acting.
I do want to emphasize, and the reason that this is important is that this is just not another NRSP, that the town code is, places a very, very, very heavy emphasis on the value of its beaches, and its wetlands, and its dunes, and its coastal resources. There are legislative findings, they're in my EAF, I'm not going to read them to you tonight, I'll spare you that, anyway, but basically, it says that, again, I'm paraphrasing, that the town's beaches and coastlines are its economic and cultural identity. That's it in one sentence, and you want to look at the language, go ahead and look at it, cite it, put it in your determination, but because of that, you have your natural resources special permit standards, the town went a step above in 2017 and said, well, you got your natural resources special permit standards, and they're all good and everything, but we're going to make some specific natural resource special permit standards specifically for erosion control structures. Because our LWRP is replete with references to the impacts of erosion control structures, and the way they have created problems that are not limited to those properties, they're legacy problems, they're ongoing management problems. There is an ounce of truth to what John said in his presentation about the town's contribution, anyway, although it's more than the town, it's the state, it's the county, it's the, it's every level of government, it's private interests before there were regulations that said what you could and could not do from the code. Blaming the town and saying, hey, this is your fault, so let us do this, or we'll, or let us do this, is just flat-out inaccurate, and it's also unfair. But the code sets a very high bar for the standards of the issuance of a natural resource special permit. But the code sets a very high bar for the standards of the issuance of a natural resources special permit. And I want to leave this photo up so that you can consider what this structure is and isn't while you're evaluating whether it meets these standards or not. Now, I'm sorry, I am going to read to you a little bit. I don't blame you if you're going to be mad at me, but I think it's important to get this on the record. Before I do, John mentioned something about nine months being a reasonable time in 2007 when this was adopted. I don't know if he's talking about for a residential construction application or an erosion control structure application. Because erosion control structures applications have always been among the most heavily scrutinized applications that come before this zoning board. They are frequently posdecked. I know Aram has worked on a couple of environmental impact statements on projects that were posdecked by the zoning board, and they are frequently denied. So the idea that, you know, the nine-month window is something to consider, some type of permanent shoreline solution, I don't think is supported anywhere in the history of the town's evaluation of these types of activities. But I do want to get into some of the specific standards. I put them in the assessment, I want you to consider them. This is what you need to evaluate this application against. So coastal structures can be placed anywhere at a location on a lot if the structure and its uses associated therewith are found not to be detrimental to any natural resource, feature, or system designated in 255-412. Those are the wetlands, beaches, dunes. No permit shall issue for any structure which would unduly interfere with tidal flow or marine life or habitat. Well, we already know this thing is, was interacting with the tide on a regular basis over the winter. It stripped the sand away that was covering the face of it in a matter of months, and John told you that he didn't think it was practical to try to keep it covered with sand because it was interacting with the shoreline. A structure will be deemed in violation of the preceding sentence and ineligible for a natural resources special permit if the structure, together with all similar structures sighted in the vicinity, should be approved, would cause undue such interference or destruction. Separately, no natural resource special permit shall be issued for the construction of an erosion control structure unless the application satisfies the following requirements. Among those requirements, the applicant shall demonstrate that erosion control on the project site cannot be adequately accomplished by means of a coastal restoration project as defined herein with periodic nourishment or renewal of sand or materials. Prior owner managed the erosion on this property for at least 20 years with sand. There is a reasonable alternative here. It is a viable alternative. You saw the photos in 2013 and 2010. The beach has been in this state before. That the threatened loss cannot reasonably be prevented by some alternative means such as relocating the building or structure or undertaking a coastal restoration project as defined herein. Both of those are allowed in 429. John's memorandum of law frequently references an application to relocate the house. You don't even need a natural resources special permit to do that. You could move that house back now, but as I think member McGivern kind of fleshed out, the application is not to move the house, it's to build a new house. And the merits of that application need to be decided separately, but the idea of let us keep this until you give us a permit for something that we want to do is clearly not what the system was set up to do.
So I'm just going to drop for a second to your point. So if, we all know that the process John is talking about could easily take a couple of years. You're saying if the owner wanted to, say, put in a piling foundation 80 feet back or whatever is appropriate there, raise the house to meet FEMA and reconnect it to the sanitary system, how long would that permit process take for that emergency application there?
I don't want to say how long it would take, I could just tell you that...
Oh, you just said you don't even need...
Moving the house back on pilings...
You're saying you don't...
Wouldn't need a natural resources permit, so I don't know what...
You're saying it's almost would be like a demolition, like a building permit?
Well, you know, I'm sure there'd be some coordination about where the best place to put the house is and the sanitary system, and, you know, the planning department would...
We should flush this out, because I'll do it.
I know, you'll be out to speak, I want to hear from Ryan though.
You know, there's a wet...
...for 35 minutes of not possible to discuss all these...
Okay, all right, hold on, John, just go ahead, Brian.
Exactly, there's a wetland back there. There's wetland back there whether you're putting a new house there or moving it out.
Again, this just goes back to my point of being a self-created hardship.
This is a challenging building site because it's eroding in the north, and it's surrounded by wetlands to the west and the east. I've discussed the application a little bit with John. We didn't work closely, as John said, over the winter. He could have made that application without having the wetlands reflagged. The wetlands haven't changed very much since 2016, the last time they were flagged. The difference is fairly nominal. It may have even been contributed by some of the construction activity that's gone on on the property.
John, you can't talk like that. John, don't...
...35 minutes of uninterrupted inaccuracy.
Okay, John...
...intelligible as honest conclusions, and no one's challenging, I can't move that house back into a wetland.
Oh, John, you can't speak from, John, listen to me, I'm not kidding. I'm not going to give you, I tell everyone, listen to me. John, listen to me. I tell everyone you can't speak from the chair. You think I'm going to just let you go on? You, listen to me. You had plenty of time, and you're going to get a chance to make another comment. Otherwise, I'll ask you to leave the room.
I'm not speaking right now.
Well, I may ask you to leave the room if you continue to speak. Go ahead, Brian.
The other permit standards that are required to be complied with in order to be eligible for an erosion control structure, all right, the erosion control structure is of the minimum size, design, and physical extent needed to prevent the threatened loss, destruction, or severe damage. Even if you wanted to consider sandbags, putting them out on the beach, running them across two properties in a private road is not the minimum design and size. We discussed this in the Curtis application, where, again, the DEC permit, in my opinion, improperly allowed the span of that revetment to be placed along the entire length of the property when a more reasonable alternative, maybe not the best alternative, but something that would be a better candidate to consider, would be something right around the foundation of the house, to prevent the loss of the house, not to kind of build out the property again. The construction, installation, or work proposed for the erosion control structure shall not interfere with the latoral transport of sand or other sediment so as to cause substantial damage or measurable increase in erosion of the project site, downdrift beaches, dunes, bluffs, or shoreline, cause a loss of identified habitat for important wildlife or native vegetation, including marine life and marine habitat, will have a reasonable probability of controlling erosion on the project site for a period of 30 years, shall be nontoxic, durable, and capable of withstanding icing weather and inundation for 30 years, and shall include a long-term program for the repair, maintenance, or restoration of the structure. None of those have been included in this, and that's not what this short-term Band-Aid was intended to address. I didn't even get into the variance standards. The variance standards require, I'll just paraphrase them and be a little brief. One of your variance criteria is, is it compatible with the neighborhood? The introduction of a sandbag wall in a place that was a natural shoreline has an adverse impact on the character of the neighborhood. It's had significant environmental impacts. There are alternatives. And again, this is, you know, the diligence of the property owner in terms of what they had thought was their coastal management expectations when they bought a waterfront property is something that really should be answered tonight by the applicant. There's still nothing about, you know, what type of diligence went into the research of the property prior to the purchase. You could see it from the building department records, you could see it on Google, you I think one of the last points, well, there are a couple, I'm sorry, there are a couple of points that I have to make with regard to the history of the property. I think it's important to recognize that, you know, John says he's ready to submit an application tomorrow, but apparently there was an application that was ready to be submitted last year and never was. In, this was submitted, this is included in the sandbag revetment application to Anne.
I saw that in the property history card, yeah.
Local attorney knows the code, Mary Jane Asato, respected local attorney. Please be advised, the owner of the property will be submitting an application to construct a new FEMA-compliant house elevated on pilings. They're in the final stages of development. They're also working with the Woods Hole Group to develop a long-term plan, and the GeoCubes will be removed when the shore protection plan is implemented. This is a letter that was submitted in, a year ago, essentially, in June. The permit included a removal plan that was prepared by First Coastal.
Yeah.
Here's the note. GeoCube will be removed no later than six months after the date of issuance of the permit, subject to extension of the emergency permit by the building department.
Yeah, I saw that in the property history card.
And then protocol of how it's going to be removed.
Yeah, in the property history card.
They said when they were coming in, we know the terms, we're going to remove this when the permit is up. And I think that's important to have that on the record. I think it's also, you know, briefly, you know, there's a lot of reference to the revetment that was approved by this board in, was it 2012, on Mulford Lane? John's memorandum of law incorrectly says the planning department supported that application. That's not true. And yes, the boards have to live with the legacy of their prior decisions, and if a property is different, they're going to have to make findings according to that. But I'll tell you right now, there are some obvious differences between the end of Bayview and the end of Mulford. There is stone at the end of Mulford now. The origin may be questionable, but it's not a natural shoreline like Bayview is. And those two houses are right at the waterline. There's essentially no beach at all, and that's been the case for quite some time. There's also a house in the bay that's been in the bay for over a decade. But again, you know my opinion about that decision. I don't think it was the ZBA's finest moment of the last decade.
So maybe if you can wrap up soon, Brian, what we'll do is we'll hear from the public, and then I will give John some time, and Brian, you may have need to follow up. We'll give you some time, we're giving you all a lot of time this evening because it's an important application.
The last thing I want to address is the concept of issuing a positive declaration and how that is, I think, inapplicable for an existing structure. You know that a positive declaration under SECRE means that you've identified significant potential, potentially significant adverse environmental impacts, and that action is, the impacts of that action are going to be studied in an environmental impact statement. I hope we can all agree on that. And that in an impact statement, you look at potential adverse impacts, you look at ways that those impacts can be avoided or mitigated, and those include alternatives to the project. There's no practical way to do that with an existing structure. Posdeck, you know, with respect to your Curtis decision, I don't see the logic in that. You posdecked an existing revetment, still haven't come back, you haven't gotten a draft scope from the applicant, and, I mean, they have what they wanted. I don't know that they have much motivation to come in and prepare an impact statement and go through that review process.
I think you're correct. I think we unfortunately have learned that you're correct in that. We have to work on somehow mitigating that and code enforcement or something, because you're right, it's been, I don't know how many months, and we haven't heard anything from them, and that's, it's just not fair. So we have to address that.
Well, you know, that's a separate property. This is, you know, kind of the same formula, but you have an opportunity to make new findings here. I'm sure you're going to discuss the alternatives in, well, your alternatives with your counsel. But I think that the information in the, in the planning department's draft environmental assessment is fairly irrefutable and demonstrable from the information that you can see either from the photos, the history, or just going to the property yourself. There are some other issues in John's memorandum that I disagree with, but I think, you know, I think in the interest of giving other people an opportunity to speak, I'm going to end my presentation and just ask the board if they have any questions they'd like me to answer.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any questions, board members, right now?
Not this time.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll hear from the public. I think this gentleman signed up, so you can come up, and so we'll need you to give us your name and address, and I'll have to swear you in, okay?
My name is Joseph Karpinskey. I live at 14 Bayview Avenue, Amity, Gansett.
Thank you. Could you spell your name for Denise, Joseph?
Yes, K-A-R-P-I-N-S-K-I.
Thanks, Joseph.
And your address again, I'm sorry.
14 Bayview Avenue.
If you could raise your right hand, please.
Certainly.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairperson, thank you, members. My family, at this point, is the oldest family on that block. Everyone has always had the rights to the road to go down to the beach. If you see their structure that they've built, they've blocked the road, they've made about an eight-foot-high dune. As per their permit, they're supposed to put beach grass on top of it, but obviously you can see with this 30-foot easement, if I could submit this picture, which shows the dune at the top, there's certainly no beach grass there because that's not where they're supposed to be.
What's the date of the picture?
That picture, that would be March 23rd.
Thank you.
And March was when I really started getting this going and making a lot of phone calls because, of course, Labor Day, I was really pleased to see that the beach was blocked. I talked to the DEC, asked them about the right-of-way being blocked. The right-of-way should not be blocked. It's also in that permit at the end. The right-of-way should not be blocked. But, you know, that's not their property, but I guess they can do what they want. I completely agree with them. I mean, there is stuff that needs to be done. I will agree with you, you do need to dredge the east side.
Can you address the board, please?
You know, I will agree with them that they need to dredge the east side, but that's something that's been going on for years. Nonetheless, though, I would really like to use my road and use my beach again. I would love to go down there with my wife and children, but currently, I can't.
Joseph, excuse me, you said this is March...
Yeah, that was March 23rd.
2019.
Yes, 2019.
Yeah, it's an interesting photo because...
That was me standing up on the center of the dune.
No, I'll just pass it to board members, because there certainly seems to be plenty of access to replenish the GeoCubes in March.
Yeah. Well, that, too. I don't know. I mean, I would say that the first storm that probably took all their sand away would have been October, so at that point, that's eight months. Brian touched on the 30-day rule, which hasn't been addressed at all. The DEC agreed with me with that when I talked to Kevin Kispert. I didn't know that they went back to get any other permits from the DEC, but I'll certainly call them tomorrow because you can only call between 1:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon, and that's on Wednesdays and Fridays. Yep, Wednesdays and Fridays, that's it. In regards to the plans that he has, they're not functional. I know that both properties have talked about building a staircase. I don't think that's functional at all. My father's 70 years old now, he just got a second hip operation, he's not going to be able to go up and down any sort of structure or hill. But ultimately, it's immediate removal, and they can come up with every other solution that they want to have. But it needs to go, it should be gone, and I really won't waste anybody else's time. The road just needs to be opened up. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out this evening and being so patient, we appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Krabowski.
Steve, could you spell your name for Denise, please? Your last name?
Jezon George R.A. B-O-S-K-I.
Thank you.
Thank you. And your address, Steve? Your address?
It's 40 Bayview Avenue.
Okay, you're...
Amity, Gansett.
Great, I'll swear you in if you please, if you raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Good evening.
As Mr. Karpinskey mentioned, I'm not going to go over what he just said, but I just want to let the board know that my in-laws, Steve DeSono, built that Ruru house in 1975 originally, and from that point forward, it was all woods. We opened it up, I helped them clear it. So, but at no time was that road blocked, okay? And I received numerous permits over the years to replenish the dune out in front of the house, but at no time, okay, did we ever block the roadway to the beach, okay? Out of respect to the neighbors, okay, if nothing else, all right? And I think that's what bothers me the most about this application that was approved, okay? It's just the sheer arrogance of it, okay? I need this, and it's going to block the road, and I really don't care, you know? But I find it ironic that at the other end of the wall, if you look at the coastal erosion map, this map that I'm looking at, you see where they returned it back on the property. They were able to do that there, why did they do it on the other end? Okay? Now, I understand construction, I've been contracted for 26 years. It makes a better job to join those two applica- It makes a better job to join those two applications together. There's no question, okay? But guess what? That's not their property, okay? And never was. It never was, you know, there for their use.
So you were bringing truckloads of sand through that road to replenish in front of the house?
Well, we used our own property, apparently, just like these guys did. They got construction access, if you look at the map. And they used their own property, but, you know, it clearly states on there, "Bayview Avenue, private." So my suggestion is, and like I, again, with Mr. Karpinski, that this wall be removed across the road, that's across the road, and then return it back on their own property just like they did on the other end, okay? And Mr. Greco, you know, will have to do the same thing because his side, you know, they did hit this wall together.
Yeah.
So, you know, but like I say, I'm very disturbed. You know, they can apply for anything. I find it ironic that Mr. Tarbit stands up here and talks about constitutional rights. But where was our rights? Where's our rights right here? They were taken away. But even so much as, hey, this is what we're going to do, all right? And we had to find this out, you know, through our own policing, okay? But I'm really disturbed that this board, and I'm disturbed at the building department, okay, for allowing this to be built on property that didn't belong to these people.
So you haven't?
That's a scary, very scary thing to happen right here, okay? And I just find it amazing, okay, that it got this far after being when I had to go through as a contractor, okay? I have to make sure I'm too high, too low, pyramid, right, Roy? Roy can attest to that. Every day, we deal with it, okay? And for this to get approved, I don't blame them for, I don't blame Tarbit for applying. The hell was he got to lose? He got it approved. I just find it amazing that this got approved going through a private road.
So when was, when was your access cut off, impeded, once?
Well, it was July of last year, when they built it.
Right. Were you able to walk, back then, when it was covered, you were able to walk over them and walk to the beach?
The last, the last time I went down there, you literally needed a stepladder to get down to the actual natural beach.
Yeah.
There was a wall there. Like Joe said, all that sand is gone. And all that sand's going to be gone.
So that started in October?
All the sand's going to be gone year after year.
Did you say in October the sand was first gone, last October?
I don't know. I didn't make it down here until March, so, before I saw.
I do have a question, and this goes to your experience of the beach replenishment over the years. Would you say that it's reasonable, a reasonable thing, that if beach replenishment was continued instead of the sandbags, that the houses are not in imminent danger? Or do you?
The reality is, no matter what you do there, it's going to be a continuous thing, okay? I had, every year, it was like clockwork. Gus McCaffrey and I would have coffee because I went through the trustees, and he'd say, "Okay, just fill out the paperwork, you'll get your permit." And we did it, but we followed it to the letter.
No, my question, my question.
And I just want to make it clear, though, I have no axe to grind with what they do out in front of their properties. I am here tonight solely for this private road being blocked. That's my interest. I don't care what the neighbors do in front of their own properties. That's their business. But I am here to get this opened up because the summer season is upon us.
Okay.
We'd like to utilize the beach. I don't want to say, "Well, we're going to discuss it for a month and a half or six weeks, and we'll give you a decision after Labor Day." Now we're right back to square one again, you know? We're getting into the winter season. But, you know, I literally went down to that house the day after Sandy receded, and I needed waiters to go down the road, okay? So I don't care what they put down there. That's just my opinion. It's not going to, it's not going to matter. You know, that's just, that's the reason why we sold it.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Like I say, my axe to grind is the road, and I'd like to see that open as soon as possible. Out of respect for the neighborhood and nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. I appreciate that. Sir, did you want to speak? Is there anyone else in the public who would like to? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Ken.
Good evening, Mr. Whalen, members of the board. My name's Kevin McCallister. I'm founder and president of Defend H2O. We're based in Neowak. I reside at 26 Indian Wells Highway.
Great.
If I may, with a little latitude...
Yeah, I'm going to swear you in first. I'm wheeling too, not whaling, but anyway, it's important. Kevin, raise your right hand, please. I'll swear you in. Do you swear, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I'll try.
Thank you.
With a little latitude, I'd like to...
Can you just tell me again who you're representing?
Defend H2O.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Defend H2O.
Thank you.
My organization is, its mission is dedicated to clean water and sustainable shorelines. By way of my background, my undergraduate works in biological sciences and natural resources. I hold a master's degree in coastal zone management. Much of the focus of study was on coastal processes. This is my time and tenure down in South Florida. I was employed with Palm Beach County for 12 years. Much of that was in shoreline protection. I've written coastal code for Palm Beach County, been involved with the permitting, project oversight of large-scale dune management projects. I've dealt with all of the, I guess, erosion control strategies from artificial reefs, sand bypassing, et cetera. I certainly consider myself an expert in dune restoration and coastal management. I've certainly been following the planning work, in particular, this project. And my concern, and I've certainly expressed this publicly, and you might see some of my writings and communications, I feel there's an alarming trend in armoring of the shoreline. Shoreline hardening structures are coming in everywhere. This town, with its foresight, and this dates back to, I believe, 1999, at the time I was the baykeeper, and I will say, even in that role, principle to my work was shoreline protection, recognizing the importance of natural shorelines and, obviously, its intimate relationship with water quality. The trend that I spoke of, obviously, with Cranberry Hole, area of concern, and these two properties in particular. Getting back to the LWRP, that was an arduous process. Certainly, I participated in it at the time, certainly trying to instill strong regulations and policies against shoreline hardening, to the credit of this town, and again, much discussion and community input. Ultimately, I think in a pragmatic way, recognized and designated zones relative to structures. The ocean beaches, the more commercial uses with more latitude with the structures, and this is in Zone 2, where, you know, there largely an absence of these structures. So in concept, it was very well-founded. The prohibition on shoreline hardening structures, of course, now with the emergency permits that, you know, when you're having this discussion, I would argue that perhaps the building inspector doesn't have the expertise to make these calls. I think that needs a much fuller examination of the process itself. So again, the merits of the LWRP are very strong and, again, well-founded with respect to structures. With respect to the specific site, and Brian did an outstanding job of articulating the conditions, and he used the term headlands, and he described Bayview Ave. coming down, ultimately bisecting a freshwater wetland. You can see it from the aerial photo. Clearly, there was fill placed. It certainly appears to be the case, and now we have two home sites. He described it as a headland. While the sandbag containers, the geotexile containers are purported to be temporary, obviously, we're here tonight to ask, seeking memorializing from this board as a permanent structure when not intended to be. My concern, if this board does allow and memorializes this structure, ultimately, over the long term, we will morph from sandbags that at least have some ability for removal to stone, and that's a very serious likelihood. Sea level rise, certainly, we all hear about the impacts of sea level rise. To put it in perspective, we've seen a four-inch rise over the last 40 years. New York State DEC has adopted in their regulations projections between 11 and 30 inches over the next 40 years. So that's enormous change. This property will likely, obviously, see wetlands migrate, the shoreline change. Again, concern about memorializing this structure and then converting it into real permanent headland with all the ramifications to disruption of sand flow, loss of shoreline. You've heard some neighbors speak of public access, and I certainly have been a champion of the public trust doctrine. It's a long-dated law in this country that provides for the right of passage and repassage. And when we have access areas that are at a premium down to the shoreline's edge, to have that basically extinguished, you know, by virtue of this structure, that's a real problem. Sand management, over the long term, you know, Brian spoke of the history of the groynes and some of the revetments that have gone in updrift, if you will. You know, they're problematic. There's no question about it. I do believe, over the long term, we have to be very cognizant of sand management in this area to ensure that dredging does benefit downdrift beaches in this location, specifically here. Going forward, again, you know, we're at an important juncture, and I can't help, and you were not present when I spoke to some similar conditions, if you will, the Cranberry Hole property, I forget the property owner's name, but, you know, ultimately, seeing these structures memorialized...
Was that the Curtis? The Curtis?
It was Curtis, correct.
We were here.
Yes, I was here. You were absent that particular evening.
I think so, but anyway.
Converting what is intended, again, to be a real stopgap to imminent danger, if you will, with erosion, ultimately, now we are seeing, and this is not the first, and Curtis, now we're here again tonight, will likely be back again, talking about similar conditions in some other sites, but to morph these temporary structures into permanent memorialized structures, you know, that's just a step backwards in the large scheme of coastal management.
With your back, I'll interrupt with you, and we don't have too much time, and I know we have, we want...
I'm pretty much...
But I want to ask you, with your background, what would you recommend immediately? What would your recommendation be for this specific site at this specific time? Like where we are right now, what would you recommend?
I think as an immediate response is certainly more sand, so bringing in sand to provide some buffer.
And planting.
And some protection. Let me speak to the planting because I've dealt with this on a number of projects where the geotextiles are in, including Montauk, which was, my organization was adamantly opposing. The plantings are purely cosmetics over these geotextiles. I mean, they may hide it, but again, there's, this is not a functioning dune that is intended to give up its material. Plantings generally will trap and help build dunes over time, but again, this is purely cosmetics. It is what it is, and that's a hardened structure. So to your question, the immediate response would be sand. I did see the letter where there was discussion about relocation. I think that's the prudent thing to do over the long term, in, again, but at a premium, protecting this shoreline. And if you look at the aerial and the proximity of this location...
When you say just now, protecting the shoreline, I just want to be clear in what you're saying, in its natural habitat?
It's natural state, yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
New York State refers to as natural protective features. That's in their Article 4, 34 regs, and this is an important point. The intention of their regulations were to ensure that that system is intact, so our sandy beaches in conjunction with dunes and bluffs, so there's natural sand replenishment. So these are dynamic systems that, again, have to act in unison. New York State DEC, by issuance of these permits, you know, they're wandering and deviating from the letter of their own codes. And I have made a point of bringing this to the attention of some of our state-elected officials. I will tell you from the information that I've been provided, DEC is under review internally, I'll call it some form of audit, on their administration of their Coastal Erosion Hazard Act. So there's question is how they are performing. And it's unfortunate because they set up a situation where then, with the property owner having a permit in hand, you know, it's more compelling on a local level to, I'll say, move this body to follow suit. And I ask you, we need to hold the line against this. And to the question about natural shorelines, when I speak about the integrity of the shoreline, that means free of structures. Its proximity with parkland, ultimately, you know, on, I'll say, the apex, if you will, it's extremely important that we don't add structure because the behavior of sandbags or stone or vertical bulkheads, and that's why you see those, the returns on these, the end scour is very typical. So should, you know, I know these are isolated, two homes isolated with adjacent open space, but inevitably, it will cause erosion to adjacent properties. If there's a home, it would force that neighbor to follow suit with another structure and right on down the line. And I'm concerned that will happen ultimately throughout this reach of shoreline with lazy point. So I implore the board, you have good basis for, again, being pragmatic in response to imminent danger or imminent hazard, but we need to hold that line and have this structure removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out, Kim. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak this evening? No? Okay, we're going to give it to John.
Just remind them it is rebuttal, so he doesn't...
Right.
Oh, boy. So Brian spoke for 45 minutes. I obviously disagreed with almost everything he said. I found a lot of it very inaccurate. It's impossible for me to now stand up and rebut all of what he said. So no matter what happens tonight, I'd like to ask for an adjournment so that we can come back whenever the board may be able to hear us again, and I can, having spent time reviewing the tape of his 45 minutes of uninterrupted testimony, I like to rebut a lot of it, but I need to review the tape because it was impossible, it's just impossible. And very much of...
I'm going to recommend we don't continue. I think you had your burden of your proof on your side, so...
So I'm just setting a record because this is where this is going. It was, I don't know, 45 minutes, but we get, I think you were... I timed it.
You were up here about 45 minutes yourself with our questions.
It's my application.
Uninhibited, though.
Yeah.
You were uninhibited.
No, I was questioned the whole entire time.
Oh, that's all right. You were questioned, but we didn't cut you off on time.
Right.
So listen.
Right. So we'll give you a couple of minutes for rebuttal because we're not going to adjourn the meeting.
A couple of minutes for rebuttal, right? A couple of minutes. So it's clear to me where we're headed tonight, right? The board, based on its demeanor, feels as though these sandbags should be gone yesterday. I came here with every good intention to work with the board. You approved a revetment, an armored revetment to our neighbor. There's been testimony tonight that, our neighbor upstream of us, there's testimony tonight that that, from the coastal geologist spoke for just now, that that, that armored revetments caused detriment to downdrift properties.
Right. You know that a former board, because a former group of people who are on the zoning board approve something does not compel us to approve what they approve.
It actually does by law.
No, I don't think you're right.
Okay, we can disagree on that, too.
Yeah, I will.
So...
No one's ever told me I was compelled to approve groynes because of...
You're required to follow your precedent.
Oh, I am?
Yes.
Yeah, I would doubt that highly. I've never been told that by any attorney or it never been advised that.
I won a zoning board case against this board with that, so. So it was a pool application where you were told to order, issue the pool permit. So I mean, I have my own case, so...
I don't think that's apples to apples. Go ahead, Jim.
All right, well, you know...
I'd stay focused on what you have to speak with now.
I am very focused.
Okay, go ahead.
So we would like to keep these sandbags while we pursue relocating our house. The issue with the road is that everybody who purchases property, their deed from the developer is to the center point of, and this was just raised earlier, and I'm just re, I'm answering the legal question about.
Yeah, please do.
Property. So when you take a deed out of a developer, in this case, probably a hundred and twenty years ago, each person gets to the midpoint of the road, subject to the public's right to access. So on a private like this, everybody in the subdivision has the right to get to a public road, even though the property owners, for lack of a better word, owned the midpoint of the road. It's debatable whether they also own the right to the bay, however, we haven't, we acknowledge and recognize that we want the neighbors to have the right to get to the bay. We thought that by covering the sandbags with sand, that would be a feasible or reasonable alternative. If they wanted returns on the sandbags, that's the perfect example how we're saying, work with us. We'll come here and we'll do returns.
I'll just, but I've got to ask you, could you just read that wording on that thing right there, that's lower right-hand corner? I mean, it says very black and white there, John. It's going to be removed.
Only read the entire paragraph or just the first?
Or you just, you could, yeah, you can read it.
GeoQ is to be removed no later than six months after the date of issuance of the town of East Hampton emergency building permit, subject to the extension of emergency permit by the building department.
That's according to the town code, is it not?
Does that prevent me from asking for a variance?
No.
I mean, I get it, you don't want the sandbags. I mean, it's just been.
I haven't rendered my decision yet.
Well, it's clear. I mean, it's clear to me, at least, that everybody in this board is opposed to sandbags on this property. I get it. What would you have me do? We've put sand there seven ti, not us, but the property owner has put sand there seven times, we lost three hundred feet in twenty years.
Seven times since when?
In twenty years.
No.
You said eighty years before.
No, sand, we put sand there seven times in.
You're saying we, you.
The property owner, before us, and.
Right. You've put sand there once in a year.
My point is that.
I'm not being, I'm not joking.
You're just, you know, you're being argumentative. The point is that the.
No, I'm not being argumentative. Part of your permit was to put sand there every thirty days.
No, it wasn't. It was to keep the sandbags covered, which we're trying to do.
Within thirty days, correct?
Yes, within thirty days. We're trying to cover the sandbags. The town won't let us. Let us cover the sandbags.
Did you not have the right to keep sand over them every thirty days during the duration of your permit?
I've explained to you that the town is saying we cannot put sand there.
Since when? What date?
That's the first thing I asked, whenever there was. When it became, we actually first heard about it, because the property owner doesn't live here. We heard the sandbags were uncovered, I think it was when Steve Grabowski went to the trustees. We immediately contacted Brian Frank and said, can we cover it with sand? The answer was no.
And what date was this?
Was it within the timeframe of the permit?
January, February of the last, of nineteen?
When we first became, yes, when we first became aware of the issue, whenever it was.
You were denied by Brian Frank?
Brian Frank will not let me put sand on the sandbags.
So in January, he didn't?
You're asking me to pick the date. I don't have the email in front of me. It was whenever.
No, but it wasn't April, it was in January. It seems to me you have the right, as of your permit.
Whenever Steve first went to.
Why did you? When the permit expired.
That's when we first became aware, April.
Well, that's a big difference in January.
You're asking me to guess, I stand corrected, he's right here. You know, you're being so argumentative. You don't want.
No, listen to me, I'm not, listen to me. You're telling us, that you're telling this board.
I will make an application for a permit.
Let me say something, I'll give you time. You're standing up before us, under oath, telling us that, and I keep harping on, when did you put sand on? When did you make an attempt? I see the picture in March. It looks to me like you could have put sand in March. I hear, let me finish. I hear some, the sand was washed away in October. I would have thought you would have maybe come back in November, December. You're telling me you came back in January, Brian told you you could not do it, and now you're saying, oh, no, it wasn't January, it was April. And you're the attorney for this applicant?
You're creating false testimony right now. You just said to me.
Am I?
Yes, you are.
Didn't you just say January you came for a permit?
You said to me, when did you, you said to me, when did, when did you first become aware of the, of the issue with the sandbags?
No, I asked you, when did you try to put sand on at last?
Right, when I said, when I first became aware, but you said, when was that? I said, I don't know. And I said, Steve, it was whenever Steve first went to the trustees. I said, I think, I think it's in February, March. But then you said April, so it's April.
Yeah, but you said January. Didn't you say January?
Look, we.
Don't you understand the difference? The difference is, if you were constantly trying to cover sand.
I was called an ambulance chaser by Brian Frank for forty-five minutes. I've had you guys just questioning me, my integrity.
John, listen to me, I'm trying to get something on the record.
What do you want? What do you want?
Your permit that you were granted, and by the DEC, states that you are to keep these covered.
We can't, Brian Frank will not let us. The town of East Hampton.
Well, that's what I was getting at. And you said you went to him in January, and he would not let you. Is that correct?
I don't know if I said it was January or not. It was a couple minutes, you said, when did you first do it? I said, when I first became aware of it.
You're just in January.
You know, you're on, we're on TV, we're on TV, just so we know, we can go back. You said January.
So funny, I said January, but the rest of the sentence was, when I first became aware of it, when Steve went to the trustees, I didn't go to the properties and visit.
But then we tried to, just for clarification, we just tried to, I think.
My memory might have been wrong.
No, no, but we were trying to clarify, I think we were trying to get to the point was, was it, was it when the permit was intact, or when it was expired?
Right, because.
That's a crucial part to this answer.
Well, the DEC permit is.
Not the DEC, the town's emergency permit.
I honestly don't.
That's exactly, well, the point of my question is not to be argumentative, John. The point of my question is, that if you were, I was trying to see how well you were trying to uphold your initial permit. And then you said, and you said, well, we tried to do it in January, the town wouldn't let us, and I found that shocking.
My answer to that is, as soon as we became aware, the sandbags were not covered with sand.
You just became aware in April that they were not covered? And you've been representing this client, designing a house? And you just became aware this?
First of all, I got hired in December. I did not go out there to see if the sandbags were covered with sand. It wasn't, I didn't get the permit, even. First coastal got the permit. I had no reason to check to see if this, why would I go? I handle, I have a hundred different zoning clients, why would I go check to see if sand was covering their sandbags?
Because you're representing this application, you're coming before us, John, you're representing that, that right there.
We go to this, what would you have us do?
I'm just curious, why, why you weren't trying to maintain your permit?
I'm here saying, it's, we have a permit that was issued by the building inspector for these sandbags.
Sorry?
I'm saying, we have a permit that was issued by the building inspector for these sandbags, and it's expired. The emergency has not gone away, and we would like to keep them while we pursue a zoning board application. If you say, you can say, no, but the emergency doesn't go away, I still need the sandbags to protect this house. I'm saying, work with us, and we will, we'll cover, we can remove the, at the end of the roadway, we can keep them covered with sand, you can have me in here every three months to make sure that I'm pursuing the application, but I'm not going to let the house get, I'm not going to let someone die in a house.
Well, that's what I'm, you're saying, we'll keep them covered with sand, and that's what I've been trying to, all night, to say, why haven't you been trying to keep them covered with sand? Like, don't you see my point?
So let the zoning board have jurisdiction of this. Have me, I come in every month, you can say, hey, what? They're not covered with sand, you're going to lose your permit. I mean, I'm giving you, I'm saying, keep your jurisdiction of this.
Okay, I'll let it go at that.
You know, you gave an armored revetment to our west, and you paused deck someone east, and this, it's still sitting there, like, these things don't, no one's going to let their house get washed away, right? So, and sand doesn't work. We lost three hundred feet over twenty years, putting sand there every couple of years. I came here with every good intention, but, you know, the Brian Frank method is, is no compromise. And there has to be compromise in these situations, especially when you gave our neighbor immediately to our, to our east, an armored revetment. And you're constantly dredging that peak, which in the LWRP says is causing erosion downstream. You know, your body, you know, your demeanor says, I don't care what you say.
No, I'm just saying, we're not the ones who, we're not, we're not doing dredging, and we're not the one giving out revetment.
You did give out a revetment.
You keep saying you.
It's your board, the zoning board did.
That wasn't my board.
So, I go back to saying, what would you have us do?
We're not going to answer that right now. We, this is a public hearing. We're taking all the information, and then what?
And I said to you, just give me more time under validly issued permit, where I have a DEC permit. And by the way, the wetlands that everybody's talking about are New York State wetlands on New York State land, and they gave us the permit. The DEC, the New York State DEC gave us a permit to put these, the revetment in, when all our surrounding property is owned by the state of New York, which is, which is, of course, the DEC.
Right, and the permit that you're not upholding the permit. I'm not saying you.
Because the town won't let me cover it with sand. I want to cover it with sand.
Well, let's get the facts straight.
Aram is supposed to be the one who's probably supposed to be maintaining this permit, and it's not, not doing a very good job of it.
Because the town won't let us.
Since April.
Right, as soon as we became aware of it.
Because the permit expired.
You think Aram has been maintaining this permit?
Let's just be, let's get that out there. Because the permit expired, the town is only not letting you because of the permit.
Honestly, I was working hard on getting the application, I wasn't even aware the permit had expired. I was working hard on getting a new application ready.
Don't you understand why they would deny it when the permit's about to expire in a week?
But we're trying to get to the fact, that's the fact.
You're saying they denied in April, the permit was expiring in April. You had already had your three-month ex. I mean, here, you come in here very well arguing this case, and then you're saying, oh, two months ago, I was too busy, you know?
I wasn't too busy.
So maybe we should ask, you know, Aram, maybe Aram should have been representing this permit, because you're the one that's.
You know what the answer is? Here's the answer, and it's for everybody. When the building department issues an emergency permit for nine months, and the DEC says you have five years.
Right.
That's ridiculous. The DEC recognizes how long it takes to relocate these houses. The town's code is ridiculous. Nine months is not enough time to do anything.
It's not our, it's not our part of the board to decide whether.
But you are required to vary the code to allow a reasonable amount of time. I'm not here for coastal, I wouldn't come here and try to meet the coastal erosion standards for Zone Two for an armored revetment for temporary sandbags. It makes no sense, I would have come in for an armored revetment. I just wanted a little more time to move my house. Now, if you're going to say, you know what, you can't have more time, then I'll submit an application tomorrow for an armored revetment.
Do you agree that you're low?
And then you can differentiate between why my neighbor can have it and I can't, under constitutional grounds, equal protection. It's not the same as what you've, you're normally dealing with. It's a constitutional argument. You cannot say to this guy, yeah, you can protect your property and your life and your, and your, and your value of your investment, but you, next door, cannot. You can't do it.
I, John, I just got to say this, I find it really shocking that you just said, town code is ridiculous. I find that shocking.
You know that town code's ridiculous, and a lot of.
I know, I know the town vote, I know that, I know the town voted to put extra resources into protecting its waters and its shorelines, and that's, that's my vote.
A section of the town code allowing nine months to relocate a house is ridiculous, not the town code itself. There's many sections of the town code that we all acknowledge need to be rewritten, or are inconsistent with other sections of the town code. And this is one of those. Nine months is just not a reasonable amount of time, so. The DEC gives you a five-year permit, and I can extend it for another five. The DEC gets it.
Can we move on from that?
Yes, yes.
You know that this, that's not the VA's.
Sure.
Decision, you can take that to the town board.
That's fine. I just wanted some sort of direction tonight. I mean, I can, if you're going to, not give me the extension of time to answer all, all the inaccuracies, you're not going to.
I'm asking that you leave the record open.
I would like to leave the record open for a chance to respond to all, all of the inaccuracies that were presented. You're saying no to that. You're saying, the, you know, Brian spoke for forty-five minutes.
And I think you've spoken for forty-five minutes combined, you easily have.
I'm sure I have.
And we can go back and find, I think you have.
I'm sure I have.
I think it's all very clear, John, what you're looking for. I think your, your, your application is clear. I think tonight you've been very clear. I think Brian has been clear. I don't think there is, you know, there's no reason, I think we all know what you want, and now it's up to this board to make the decision.
But my point is, is that if you're, if you're going to treat this as a coastal erosion structure, I'll amend my application for an armored revetment. There's no sense in asking for temporary sandbags.
I'm not saying you, I'm not saying we're treating you.
Well, that's, that's the standards that Brian read tonight, were, were the standards required to get an NRSP, an invariant for a permanent coastal erosion structure. We already have a structure there.
We know you're not applying for a permanent one, we know that.
But that's, that's, that's what Brian Frank read for permanent. The temporary structure, there's only one way to get a temporary structure, and that's.
I don't know if I heard him say permanent, I heard him say hardened, or something, they use hardened, but not permanent.
Well, but once you grant that permit, once you grant those permits, they're permanent. This, we have a temporary permit already issued, we have, the sandbags are there. The section of the code he's referring to doesn't contemplate such structures that are already there. We have one, it's there, and we're simply asking you to, so, I just don't know where to go with this. You're not going to pause deck, I guess, because you figure all that, there's no need for more, further, there's no, there's no significant environmental impact.
No, because unfortunately, a paused deck, we've learned that a paused deck, unfortunately, in these kind of situations, there's no, you know, there's no impetus to get that process moving, and, so.
All right, so Aram will speak to that. I mean, this is, honestly, it feels a little bit as though it's a foregone conclusion.
Can I just say something? We close the initial hearing, and now in a rebuttal stage, right? We asked for a public hearing. Now, Aram's standing up there looking like he's talking. No, we're done. We're done here. It's like, what are you doing?
So you're going to deny us the chance, have our coastal engineer speak?
I'm a coastal geologist, my name is Aram Turcuni, and there are numerous factual and scientifically erroneous statements.
This is the rebuttal part of this.
I've been sworn in already. There are numerous factual inaccuracies in what you've heard, and I believe that my client deserves the right to rebut those technical arguments made by your staff. And we can do it tonight, or we can do it at some other date, but I don't think you can deny them the right to rebut inaccurate statements.
Okay, that's your opinion?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Because this is, it's clear where you're going with this. You're not giving us a chance to rebut, either by adjourning the hearing and letting us do it in writing, or by letting.
We just gave you the chance to rebut.
I'm still speaking.
No, you're presenting new, you're presenting new, new, new.
You know what? Closing.
New testimony here.
The record's fine by me.
If we left it open, open for a week. If we left it open for a week...
Is that gonna be enough?
We're not gonna leave, let me just tell you something. We're not gonna make the mistake of playing ping pong so that this thing goes on for three more months. We've got these gentlemen here who maybe would like to enjoy the beach over the summer.
Let me cover with sand.
Well, you haven't covered it with sand. You don't even know, I don't, you don't even know the last time you covered it with sand. The last time you covered it with sand, it sounds to me, was back in July a year ago.
I believe their issue is access to the beach, and I'm happy to do returns.
Excuse me?
I think their issue, if I understand correctly, is they want access to the beach. We thought that covering it with sand would provide access. If it's returns, we can do returns.
Yeah, but nobody's minding the, minding the...
No, the issue, the issue.
You covered it with sand, and it washed away in October, so all these folks in the neighborhood haven't had a chance to go to the beach.
So we'll do returns. We can do returns at the end of the...
Yeah, but that was, you've had it for, it's been a year, it's been...
So, Mr. Chairman, Aram Turchunian. So, in other words...
Before you speak, I have one question for you. What did you write on that? What did you submit?
I wrote exactly what's already been stated.
Okay, so why is that thing still there?
Because you can talk, because I do not own the property or control the property, and therefore I cannot act on the property until I'm authorized to act, and you know that very well.
So who's supposed to, were you in charge of replenishing the sand per...
We're in charge of responding to...
Let me finish, Aram. There's a DEC permit, and there's an East Hampton Town permit, right?
Yes.
Who's responsible for following that permit and replenishing the sand every 30 days?
The applicant is responsible.
Did the applicant hire you as their agent?
Yes.
And you installed this?
Yes.
Right, and after that, you're gone and you're away, until you come back a year later now. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
What is correct?
What is correct is that there were a series of storms, including, as Mr. Frank already stated, in late January, that were, waves were banging directly against the revetment, the sandbags. When we, as Mr. Tarbet said, were brought to our attention that the beach had not recovered, it was past April 1, and we could no longer work on the...
It was brought to your attention.
We then responded to that prohibition of work after April 1 by requesting a modification from the DEC to place sand to cover the sandbags. The DEC granted that request, and we are prepared to respond immediately to cover that, those sandbags. We are being prevented by doing that by the town of East Hampton. The town of East Hampton will give us permission to either cover the sandbags, or, as Mr. Tarbet has said, revise the returns in order to provide access for the people on Bayview. We will do that as long as the applicant agrees. We are prepared and ready to go now. So to keep saying, why didn't you do it? Why didn't you do it? I'm here today, now, saying we'll do it. Why won't you let me?
Yeah, but why, why did you wait since January?
But you have the authority to change that.
But, Aram, you were not, now you're monitoring it, but since January, no one was going out there to see if there was sand there?
There were storms all the way through to the end of March. The water was up against the bags. Now that it's June, and the wind, and the wind has changed, and the beach has recovered a little bit, you're wondering why it can't be done. Well, it can be done, and we wanna do it.
So the only time sand was installed was when you install, your company installed this? And then you walk away, and you don't monitor it?
No, we didn't walk away, but there was no way to, so, I will supply you with photos that show water against this at the end of October from a storm. That is what washed the initial sand away. There were additional storms. I may have records of those in my office. I will go look to find those photos. But it makes very little sense to go out there and put sand down and have it washed away 10 days later. It does make a lot of sense to work with the regulatory agencies, when the conditions are right, to move rapidly, to place sand over that, so people can have access to the beach, and so that, so that the sandbags be covered. We are being prevented by the town from doing that. I don't know how much more simply I can state it.
All right, so if we, I don't know if the board's gonna go along with me, but we could give you a week to write up whatever comments you have. The only thing you haven't, to Brian's, but we're not gonna leave this thing open. I don't know if they, was even going to agree to a week. I mean, this is, I think it's all very clear, what you want, and you can state that Brian gave inaccuracies, and he can state that you did, but I think we all are cognizant enough of what's going on here.
You know, listen, I can't force you to do anything. You're the board. You tell me. But let me just say a couple of things before you decide what you wanna do. Number one, I've been practicing in this field of science for 35 years, all right? And my reputation is well-known. I don't have to quote you chapter and verse what courses I took and where I worked, all right? And I will not be called a regulatory ambulance chaser, nor will it be implied that somehow we threatened the building inspector. Mr. Frank said that. So Mr. Frank wants to make an accusation, that's great, but then let him back it up. Because I came to you tonight with science, to explain to you what's happening on the shoreline, and why it's happening, and why placing sand alone will not work.
Are you handing that in this evening?
I hope to hand it in.
So here you show up at a public, you show up at a public hearing with an inch of the, oh, that's a whole bunch of files.
Yeah, there's slides.
Oh, okay. Okay, you can hand that in.
And then these, this is my letter explaining why I think it is. This area, since 1978, is eroding at eight feet per year. You cannot place sand on 100 feet of shoreline with an erosion rate of eight feet per year and expect that it's going to work. Is the town going to warrant to this applicant that placing sand is gonna save them and make them safe? Because if this board and this town's willing to do that, I don't know, maybe they're interested. But I don't think you are. So to offer a solution that will not work is not a solution. We have poor options here. My job is to help identify what maybe the best option is. And the best option is more sand in the system. That's what Mr. McAllister said. What would you do immediately? The words out of his mouth.
All I can say, all I can say is, we have standards to rule by. We have, we've heard you, we've heard the opposing side. We have our standards. We're gonna rule according to the standards.
That's fine.
That's it.
That's fine. But you're ruling on incomplete and inaccurate information. Mr. Frank's rendition of what's happening on the shoreline, specifically his statement that sand alone will stabilize this shoreline and protect this house, is wrong. It is flat wrong.
If we put these in the record, are you comfortable then, then they're not just relying on one side?
No, because, because I have, I have six pages of notes that I took during Mr. Frank's testimony.
And we would need a digitalized copy of that submission, Chairman.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, yeah. We'll need you to send a digitalized copy of that, too.
Yeah.
Of this submission here you're handing in.
Yep. There's one other file that needs to be placed on, I'll place it on the drive right now. I'll give you this drive. It's all here.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm comfortable with leaving the record open for a week for additional information.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that a prudent approach.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah, I agree. I'm fine with that.
Brian? Roy?
Brian, it runs to speak.
Brian Frank, a couple of things. One, the regulatory ambulance chasing was a broader comment, and if they're feeling a little defensive about that, that's not on me. I didn't call anybody anything.
I think you referred to, in general, I don't remember you specifically...
It was a generalization. I'm certain, anyway, just a couple more points. I didn't wanna belabor this, along with John's good faith effort about moving things along and asking for a little bit more time and working with the board. That revetment was installed in July. This application was submitted in late February. The DEC permit condition that we're talking about, if, condition number 25, if the substructure, the GeoCubes shown on the approved plans of the reconstructed doom becomes exposed at any time, the permatee shall cover the structure with upland sand of compatible grain size within 30 days of discovering the exposure. If the permatee fails to comply with these requirements, the structure shall be removed by April 15.
And there's no exclusion of pending storms or anything like that?
First Coastal get the permit? Brian?
Um, I don't know. It was, it was issued to RuRu Property. Well, yeah, yes, First Coastal did. So this application didn't come in in February, and I gotta tell you, you don't even have an application yet on the Greco property. This is not, again, this is not what this, what this application process was for. Everything that I mentioned in my presentation, regardless of how long it was, was already in writing to this board in the draft environmental assessment form. The only thing that's supplemented, including these photos, everything that I showed you up there, with the exception of possible one photo, it's a hard copy in there. The only thing that I added to was in response to John's memorandum of law that he submitted on Friday. This idea that we need more time to respond is, I think it's a little unfair. Aram will be the first one to tell you how much experience he has with this. He knows what the town code is. He's been here before. A lot of these issues we did discuss on the Curtis application. I don't believe that Aram, or even John, can get up here and tell you that they're surprised by everything, by anything in the, in the environmental assessment. And the last point of correction that I'm gonna make, or what I hope is the last point of correction, is I never said that sand alone could solve the problem here. What I did say is that the prior owner managed to control erosion on this property for 20 years using sand only. There are other alternatives that the code directs you to. So this idea of cherry picking my comments and getting defensive and hyper focusing on partial statements is nonsense. This has been, this, this application was delayed in the making. This, the code requi, this application should have come in at the latest with the sandbag revetment. It came in well into the life of the first, beyond the life of the first six months, into the extension period in February. And now to drag it out any longer, I don't know what you, I don't know why they didn't come here prepared to make a more cogent argument as to why the sandbags should remain.
And as far as what you just, your comment about other opportunities, such as core logs and sand replenishment and core logs?
Not even, not even core logs. And, no, just alternatives, whether you're moving the structure back, whether you're looking at alternative designs even of a structure, whether you're using a combination of those, that's where the code directs you, as away from the shoreline. Where these sandbags are right now, you know, Aram basically told you, you can't sustain them. You can't keep them covered during, during the winter. They're too far out into the, into the, into the beach to be a sustainable, manageable alternative.
Yeah, I mean, I kinda wondered when the, when it was being written, if the idea, if this, if this were my property, I only had six months, I think I would probably be saying, you know, what can I do to raise this thing up, make it meet FEMA, so at least I'm not gonna be washed away, or something like that. Some emergency measure, or move it back 40 feet, pick it up six feet, or whatever it needs to meet FEMA. I have a feeling that's what the emergency measures were probably intended to be dealing with, not, not...
Mr. Chairman, I just, from my standpoint, I move to close the hearing and the public record tonight. I think all this he said, she said, doesn't need to be vetted out, 'cause that's what, that's what the accusations are, he said, she said. So I think we have enough evidence before us this evening to close the record and make a decision.
And if there's stuff that they wanna get on the record tonight while we're all here, then by, by all means. I mean, I know it's late, but, you know...
Okay, let him finish.
Is it in here?
No, no. We'll go point by point.
Why don't we just give him a week?
I think...
Did you have the opportunity to review what he had in the record prior to tonight?
No, a lot of things he said were not part of the... I can give you an example. I'll give you one example. Brian Frank said that we could, right now, with no need to go to the zoning board, we can move the house back. It's something I would seriously consider doing, if I could do that without going to the zoning board. There's wetlands behind this house. Are you telling me I can build this house as far, 'cause I own two properties?
He said there are alternatives, one of them. If that's not a viable alternative, then there are other alternatives, from what I heard.
I don't know. I'd like to clarify.
Have you pursued those alternatives with him?
Well, no, I...
Like picking it up to meet FEMA?
No, we haven't even...
No, he said I can move it back with no permits necessary.
Have you, have you gone, sat down with him to pursue alternatives, other alternatives, and...
Such as picking it up to meet FEMA, right where it is?
And, and again...
Well, then I would, I would put, I would want an armored revetment around it, because otherwise the water's gonna go right underneath it. I won't be able to get to it. Right? So, but I think one of the things he said tonight was that the applicants could simply take the existing house and move it back on the property. I'll merge both properties and move it as far back as I can. That'll save my house. But I think that needs zoning board permits. And I think tonight he told you, you don't need them.
But you've already testified that that's not your intent with this property.
Right. Because I was, it's my understanding...
You intend to build a new house?
How come everybody's, every, I feel like every time I say something, you question my credibility.
I'm not questioning your credibility. I'm just recalling something you said, that's all. I'm not requesting, I have not...
But can I ask Brian to clarify?
For the record, I have not questioned your credibility tonight one bit.
It feels as though both Aram and I have had our credibility...
What it feels like questioning, feels like...
But, but he said there is, 'cause I'll do it, we might abandon the sandbag, we might pull the sandbags out tomorrow, if, if it's true what he said, that I can simply take this house and move it to the, I'd like to just clarify it. He said, I believe his testimony was...
This is not, but this is not the form to do it.
I said something that's inaccurate. I'd like it... Just reading the code.
Well, that's good. Let's see what's... I've never...
And then I think, I have a feeling the majority of the board, John, just so you and Aram know, is going to give you a week to put whatever you want in writing and submit it to the board.
Emergency activities...
You need a week, and now you're saying you don't need a week?
No, no, I'm saying let's stop, go back and forth.
We'll let, we'll let Brian finish reading this code. Go ahead, Brian, please.
Emer, this, this is, again, 429. These are the emergency activ, the same chapter that allows the placement of the Geotextiles. And I'll read the whole thing. Emergency activities shall be limited to the following actions: moving a building or structure to a location which is landward of its existing location; making alterations to the building or structure solely to repair damage already caused by flooding or erosion, or to prevent a structural failure of all or part of the building or structure; depositing sand fill seaward of the building or structure; installing a Geotextile tube or sandbag system with provisions for its eventual removal as required by this section.
Sounds like...
I, I mean...
Like it's in the code.
And, and I...
From, just from the NRSP standards, from our position, is a sandbag the only alternative to this property?
Um, no, I, I hope I made that clear.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure, he just read the code, which I can read also. I've done it along, I wrote, written the code, partly.
Do you wanna read what he just read? Read it, look at it yourself? Go ahead.
But Brian Frank control, you understand, the code is written, and then people like Brian Frank interpret and tell us what we can do. If I can move my house, if I can move my house back, he said something, I, I can move back, 'cause there's a wetland back there. I could put, 'cause if I move my house back, I gotta move my septic back. So I'd have to build my house and my septic system in the wetland, which I'm happy to do, because I'd save my property from being washed away by storm. My understanding is you can't just do that. I'll do it tomorrow, potentially, if we can, if Brian can say that's what the code says.
I don't think...
You've only addressed one alternative.
Well, I think that he was saying that one, some of the alternatives, generally, that's an alternative, not that looking at your specific...
Okay, so I can't, to be clear, I couldn't just move the house back.
Don't take, don't do that, based on that, on what he said.
That would be a great alternative.
You have to take the alternatives, and then look at the specific issues that affect your property individually.
So one of the things he said was, we could've simply moved the house back. We can't. We have, we'd have to come to this board. Done. Understood. It's one of the things I'd like to clarify, how it was.
Those alternatives could've been pursued back in, starting last July, the emergency things could've pursued and not waiting until a year later, but anyway. The emergency, you could've, you, maybe you're not involved, but whoever was involved with this owner could've pursued...
They did, they started...
I think we're done. I think you're right.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, we filed this field, yes.
So why don't we, why don't we close?
I think we're gonna give you, do we agree we're gonna give them a week?
A week.
I think we, Terry?
One week, fine. Give him a week, fine.
Please.
One week for me? Roy?
Yeah.
A practical question, was the, was the hearing taped?
I'm sorry?
Was the hearing taped?
Of course.
I know, I heard LTV was not working tonight.
They'll, they will be up, but they're, they will...
It will, so I can hear, I can hear tomorrow. Okay.
They just had some issues tonight, John.
Okay, thank you. So we'll submit written responses within one week to comments made by the public.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, I will make a motion with regard to RuRu Properties LLC at 114 Bayview Avenue, am against a tax amount number 300-84-7.1, to close the public hearing and leave the written record open for the applicant's agent and consultant, or, and, and First Coastal, to respond to comments from the planning department and the public.
Second.
Concur.
Yeah, abstain, right. Okay, okay, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Dissent.
Oh, well, these have to be signed in, right? They have to be stamped in. Chairman? And then, well, this... Where is that flash draw? Is there a copy for everyone? I didn't even...
What's the problem?
I mean, it looks like there is, but... And you, you know what? I think I'm gonna just take that. There is enough, right? Okay.
Okay, thanks, Aram. Thank you. Yeah. And Denise, I'll put all these in the folder that they can get, maybe Susan could put them in the mailbox or something? There's one for all, oh, no, we can spread them out right now. Let's hand them out now, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, let me toss it.
And stamp it in for tonight?
Yeah, I'll stamp one in for the record, yep, yep. Right. It's me. Let's go put that, yeah, that's my copy. That's your copies of that. Okay, we've got some other things here. Hand it in the night of the public hearing.
Excuse me.
Wow, that's a nice schematic of-
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah.
Maps and things, I can actually see.
I know, right, yeah.
I approve, especially at 10 after 10.
Right.
Gonna read it now?
Brian, would you like a copy of the, we have extra copies for your records, for your file?
Um, I, I guess I should.
Yeah. There's one. You might want something to read when you get home.
Yeah.
Put it in the bag.
Okay, so now we're going to-
Okay, let's move along here, yes, yes. Okay, that's that, so, that's me. Okay, okay, board members, this is an extension of time. Okay, this is in the matter of application, Adelaide De Manille at 43 Mile Road, I'll pass this on to board member Brennaman, Tim, please.
So Denise?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's, yeah, and there's other stuff here. I'm gonna give you this, Jim.
This is, you need to discuss this because they're requesting an extension of time, but records do not show-
That there's a building permit.
That there's a building permit.
So there's no building permit?
So you have to determine whether, this has come up before, we've tabled it, and you just have to make a determination tonight how you want me to proceed.
When I drove up to the property several weeks ago-
Yeah.
It's obviously a very special property-
Yeah.
But there's no evidence of any construction or any activity that's ever been done since this was filed in 2012. We went back and looked and Denise could not find any evidence of there being a building permit ever issued on this property. So we're, you know, we're being asked to extend something-
Yeah, it doesn't sound like-
That may not technically exist.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like we should.
What was the, what was the determination for?
I have the determination here from June 25, 2012, to construct an 8,402 square foot two-story residence with 1,012 square foot attached garage, gardener shed, six-foot square foot pool, six-foot square foot barn, generator, and let me go back to the conditions, because I have a feeling it probably said-
Well, it says here that the condition was that a requirement that the building permit be obtained within 36 months of the date of filing of the determination.
And we don't have it.
And the date of filing of the- Okay, so now we're going to-
Okay, let's move along here, yes, yes. Okay, that's that, so, that's me. Okay, let's go. Okay, okay, board members, this is an extension of time. Okay, this is in the matter of application, Adelaide De Manille at 43 Mile Road, I'll pass this on to board member Brennaman, Tim, please.
So Denise?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's, yeah, and there's other stuff here. I'm gonna give you this, Jim.
This is, you need to discuss this because they're requesting an extension of time, but records do not show-
That there's a building permit.
That there's a building permit.
So there's no building permit?
So you have to determine whether, this has come up before, we've tabled it, and you just have to make a determination tonight how you want me to proceed.
When I drove up to the property several weeks ago-
Yeah.
It's obviously a very special property-
Yeah.
But there's no evidence of any construction or any activity that's ever been done since this was filed in 2012. We went back and looked and Denise could not find any evidence of there being a building permit ever issued on this property. So we're, you know, we're being asked to extend something-
Yeah, it doesn't sound like-
That may not technically exist.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like we should.
What was the, what was the determination for?
I have the determination here from June 25, 2012, to construct an 8,402 square foot two-story residence with 1,012 square foot attached garage, gardener shed, six-foot square foot pool, six-foot square foot barn, generator, and let me go back to the conditions, because I have a feeling it probably said-
Well, it says here that the condition was that a requirement that the building permit be obtained within 36 months of the date of filing of the determination.
And we don't have it.
And the date of filing of the determination was November 14, 2012.
Right, that's what it sounds like.
So, you know-
Yeah, six months here, yep.
I mean Denise, was your research definitive?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I spoke with building inspectors.
And, well, that's good, just for the record, and you spoke with the-
I mean, I-
And you spoke, they went to the property history card, I'm sure?
Yeah, what the applicant is actually wanting to do is just keep the decision valid.
Right, I believe that what they're probably asking for is they're getting an extension of time, they want to, not, they're not claiming that they got the building permit, perhaps. They want to breathe life back into that-
Yes.
Determination to give them the right to seek building permits.
Okay, but now, it's an unusual situation.
Is that what was checked on their application?
I'm sorry?
To obtain a permit?
No, I mean, I checked, there's nothing-
What did they have checked for the reason for the use?
Yeah, it's just for, they just want to extend the permit.
Extend the deter-
Plan, they don't have a permit. To get a building permit.
Well, they say the NRSP, it says, please find an NRSP special permit variance extension of time. I think you're right, Jameson, they feel, they feel that they're extending the NRSP.
Correct.
So my feeling is this does not fall, falls within the 10-year, you know, we set a policy of 10 years, so I think we should just let it approve it.
The question would be if it's, if it's not within, if it's outside the 10 years, has any significant changes happened with the code-
Correct.
Or with the property itself that no long, it would no longer be possible to grant-
Right.
An approval of this nature on this property.
Okay, with the fact that it's new residents, then, let's talk about the IA system. Do they automatically have to get a new IA system?
That would come with the building, they would have to, yeah, they would have to.
Or, do they?
Yeah, that would be subject to-
The changes in GFA would fall under the building permit.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
Those are all good questions. You know, it's all good questions.
Well, I know. Well, if I, I haven't prepared the extension yet, and it could be conditioned upon things you are saying.
Compliance with current-
Well, are we, are we doing-
Are you able to do that?
We can.
I think that's a good point.
So we can say conditioned on meeting current-
Sensitivity on property-
Current at the time?
Current code conditions.
Right, so, so you have an option here, so in fact, it's not just, it's, it has been less than 10 years, but there have been changes.
Right.
So you can either deny the application for the extension of time-
I think in this-
Because the changes are so extreme, or-
Prove it conditional.
Yeah. Could we, I see, could we, could we have Denise draft an extension and work with you, Jameson, in her language? And include, I think the board would all like to see included that, that when the building permit is, is obtained, that that building permit meet with current, current zoning-
State and local.
And local code.
Even the energy code has changed.
GFA, you know, gross floor area, energy code, sanitary code, that sort of thing. Maybe if you could stipulate something like that, I think we'd feel comfortable signing that.
Okay.
Do you agree, board members?
Yeah, I think that's a very fair approach.
Way to handle it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So Denise, could you work with Jameson on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Denise, do you want this back? Exceeded those-
Um, no, you keep that on the file.
Put it right back here.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, so, so we'll table that until we get a look at that draft, or we come back with that.
We have three years to get.
Okay.
I didn't expect it to go so late.
Okay, board members, let's see what else we have here. We have a couple of resolutions, I know that, those didn't take too long, though.
We have a mod.
I think the Sunawi mod.
I have a determination that Mora printed with the file.
We have a modification? We have De Manille, we took care of that.
Sunawi?
You have a mod?
I don't have it.
Oh.
I emailed it, yeah, I don't have a file, I'm sorry.
I printed what you sent.
Sunawi, right?
Yes.
If you want-
I read what you sent.
Yeah.
I recuse that, so if you all want to discuss it, I will leave, or whatever you're gonna do, let me know.
I, I-
Is it one page?
Have you guys read it?
Yeah, it's right here.
John needs to leave, I can make a motion right off the bat on this, because I, I happen to agree with the planning department's assessment on this.
Who's recused?
I am.
John.
John's recused.
I can step out for a minute.
I would step out, and just get, just get something on, get it on the record, whatever you're-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so this is a modification for Sunawi NRSP, and variance is modification
request for Waring Lane Amagansett, Suffolk tax map number 300-039-14-11. The CBA determination was filed on 12/20/17. The modification is, it's a modification in the, I think, the pool design, is that correct, Brian? And then there's a two-and-a-half-foot reduction in the wetland setback. The planning department does not object to the request of modifications, so I think, and it would be in my district, I think, so I would make a, a motion to accept the modification.
I concur.
And I concur.
Okay.
I think it's in John's district, isn't it? Amagansett?
Yeah, it's John.
No, no, I know, it just was-
This is Springs.
Oh, it is?
Yes, it's Aquabonic Harbor.
Oh, all right.
What's the, can you just say the address again on my, is this Sunawi?
For Waring Lane-
For Waring Lane Amagansett, is that a type?
Yeah, For Waring Lane Amagansett, but it is Springs, it's weird.
It is Amagansett.
It's on, it's on Fireplace Road.
Isn't it For Waring Lane? What is that? For Waring Lane?
Yeah, but it's off, it's off-
Oh, okay.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we had the address right.
So it's Springs? Springs?
I don't know.
Does that make it, Mike? Well, Robbins Lane, wasn't that it? No, it's an Amagansett.
Is it Springs?
Springs.
Okay.
Robbins Way, yeah.
Springs.
Springs.
Okay. Okay, board members, I make a motion, I mean, I'd like to suggest that we hold off on any decisions until the work session. Minutes, we have the minutes, I believe have all been-
Yep.
From the 14th and the 21st, does anyone want to make a motion on the minutes?
Tim?
Well, I wasn't here on the 21st.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the 14th, May 14, and May 21st, for the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Concur.
And I concur, thank you, Terry. Okay, then we have a few resolution, a few resolutions.
Is Foley?
What is this, that's for you, right? Okay.
We're able to review that, I know Mora saw your email and added in the-
She did, good, good, yeah, great, great, excellent. Okay, so the first here we have is, is in the matter of John Foley. I just want to get that address here. Tim, this isn't you?
It's mine.
No, this is you, I'm sorry, that's you.
No, it's John's.
It is, it's, it's-
It's John's.
You mean?
It's Tim's.
Who's on first?
Who's on second? I don't know.
Is there someone sitting next to me?
What is happening?
Go ahead, Tim.
Is it a full moon? I just wanted to know.
Lions and tigers and bears, oh my.
Let's see, this is, where's my address?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see the address, oh, they-
Oh, don't yawn.
Late.
Excuse me, don't yawn, sorry.
Okay, so this is John Foley, which was at 183 Mile Harbor Drive in East Hampton, and this was a request to demolish an existing 4,742 square foot residence and the associated structures, and then to construct a new 4,742 square foot two-story residence. You recall, this was in an environmentally sensitive area, we had a long conversation about this, and we, four of us concurred with one dissension on this matter. So, concurring with respect to the grant of a natural resource special permit, and the eight variances were John, Roy, Tim, and Joan, and dissenting with respect to the issuance of the variance of the 612 square foot-
GFA here.
Yes, related to the GFA was Member Burger. So, Member Burger agreed-
I consented.
According to what this is, I can't tell you, I have direct recall of this.
Yeah, you did, you did to the GFA.
I did to the GFA?
That's what-
Okay. I don't recall that, actually.
Well, we do a couple of applications.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? Was the point you raised in your email, is that in this now?
That is, about the water, yes, that the installing the water.
So where, where does that show up? As one of the conditions of approval?
It's supposed to, yes.
It actually should be in the body, because it was a consideration for our-
It's in two places, I can't lay it off the top of my head, but if you want to hand it to me, I can find it.
When did we decide?
And she amended it and resent.
She did, she put right in her note where she put it, but I don't remember what was in that note.
I printed the original one. Um-
Is that a current, your printout, John?
No, this is the-
Or was that the original this morning?
The original. To be honest, I didn't-
The applicant will connect the parcel to public water, bringing access from the water main to 3 Mile Harbor Drive, thereby making public water available to neighboring properties as well.
Good.
That's a number 12. So, Member Burger, are you comfortable with this as written?
I think so, I don't know, I don't recall this said.
And it's also in the condition?
Did you hear anybody else say that?
You were against the increase in the GFA.
You remembered me saying that?
Well, I might just go on the record, but it must have been on the record, because that's why they wrote it. I think I recall that.
Within the body of the-
You liked everything, but you didn't like the idea of giving the, as I recall.
Finding inclusion.
There's nothing wrong with it, it's just-
It's weird that I just over-messed.
Make a motion?
We're back to conditions of approval.
Don't forget the deer fencing.
Does the board want more time to review this? It was circulated, but-
Yes, it's D.
I, I, I didn't get a chance.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion.
I'm making a motion.
No, I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna make a, you can second my motion.
Yes, yes, please do.
In the matter of John Foley-
Brian, thanks, thanks, Brian.
Which is Suffolk County Tax Map-
Before we do that, was it deer fencing removal?
Yes, it was, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Michael.
Woo!
Go ahead, Tim, go ahead.
In the matter of John Foley, Suffolk Tax, Suffolk County Tax Map, 300-74-2-27.1, I make a motion that, I make a motion that we-
Approve the application.
With regard to the grant of the natural resource special permit, the residence patio, et cetera, et cetera, with one exception, so should I do it in two separate, or should this-
No, no, we're approving the application.
You're approving the application.
She's gonna dissent to the, to the GFA.
All right, well, then I, I stick with my, et cetera, et cetera. That's my motion.
Joan, you want to second that?
I'd like to second that.
Concur.
And I concur.
And I concur to all matters except for the approval of the GFA.
It was a lot simpler than I was about to make.
Okay, good, that's that. Now we have, counsel, we have another one.
Shahab Khan?
Yeah, Shahab Khan. Denise, do I stick this in the whole, I have the big, you know, what do you call it? The file?
You can put it right in the file.
Okay.
It's yours.
We'll put them all right in the file and back in the bin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this one, board members, is in the matter of Shahab Khan and Robert Cohen, tax map number 300-174-7-22, and this is at, in Amagansett, it's in Beach Hampton, 58 Nap Peak Lane, and this is the application is to construct a two-story, 1,878 square foot residence, sanitary system, parcel land containing wetlands and beach vegetation, and this was, we concurred, this was unanimous approval, so I make a motion with regard to the application of Shahab Khan, Robert Cohen, to approve the application.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, one more?
Two more.
Two more.
Oh, wow.
Oh, I don't have, what are the, okay.
The three were originally circulated, and then the third, and then the fourth was-
Oh, this is a resolution, amendment.
Oh, so those we better put in a folder, John, so we don't misplace them, because they don't, I don't think we have a folder.
Right, what, what the-
Do we have the folder, too, Jameson?
Yeah, we have all these.
Oh, okay, great, great.
We have these, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a resolution amending the determination for Robert Gelfond and Sandra Leong, Tax Map number 300-175-7-4. And this was at 261 Marine Boulevard in Amagansett. And the request to modify is this determination from June 20, 2016, a variance to demolish the existing residence. That's a lot. Swimming pool decking, sanitary system, construct a new 5,074 square foot two-story residence, 841 square foot swimming pool, 1329 square foot decking, 160 extension of the existing walkway, new sanitary system, 6,286 square feet of vegetation. And then above the town's maximum building height outside the town's perimeter and within jurisdiction of setbacks. Okay, so the proposed modification is to amend this sanitary system layout to be modified to conform with Suffolk County Health approved layout. The new layout includes the 1,000 gallon propane tank on the east side of the residence and the drywells. Okay, so I make a motion to approve this resolution amending the determination.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Okay, thank you. One more, counsel?
While we're doing that, can I just go back to Khan real quick?
Sure.
Because that decision was made during the meeting that I was not present, but I did review my records, and for the record, I concurred with the board on that. I just want to be clear that I wasn't here that evening.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, Tim. Appreciate that.
This is Miss Berger's.
Okay, Terry, this is yours. Catherine Mazinka Snipis and Bruce Snipis?
Except I'm in the center.
Oh, okay. You want to handle that, Roy?
Sure. The purpose of the application is combined, oh, this is the two parcel one.
Right.
And to construct a 2490 square foot two-story residence, 420 square foot attached garage, 600 square foot patio, 1,590 square foot second story, roof decking, approximately 2,800 square foot driveways, sanitary system, and 11,275 feet of clearing.
And it mentions lots merging, right? What's the name on this application? This is Mazinka Snipis. Snipis, Snipis.
All concurring on this, on the approval, was Chairman Whelan, me, Tim-
Whelan.
Whelan, and Joan McGivern. Sorry. And dissenting was Teresa Berger. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the application of Catherine Mazinka and Snipis and Bruce Snipis, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-49-02-19.2 and 22, 20.2.
Do we have a second?
Second. I'll concur.
Okay, and I concur.
And I dissent.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, counsel, anything else? Okay.
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the hearing and hearing of the zoning board of appeals for the town of East Hampton on June 4 at 10:37 PM.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
And I concur. Thanks, Roy. Thanks, you all, that was fun.
Jameson, we're going to miss you.
How are you?
Where are you going?
Are you going somewhere?
No, Beth will be back, though, Monday.
Oh, really? Well, thank you, Jameson, for your work.
I'm going to miss you, too.